For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County vis statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. So this is our agenda for December 21, 2022, and our first item is adoption of the minutes for November 16, 2022 to the commission. Are there any questions or is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, move approval?
There's a motion.
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I see and hear none. That motion passes. Thank you. First, want to make sure we have, I know we'll go to the adoption of the agenda, but is there any council members present? Okay. Who's presenting the agenda?
So we have several changes requested. 1616 16th Avenue South, say that a few times. There's a request to pull that from the consent agenda, so that'll be heard, if you agree, that'll be heard at the end of the meeting. And then 148 Second Avenue North, notification requirements were not met. 132 Second Avenue North and 3821 Whitland and 2505 Natchez Trace have requested a deferral. 128 Second Avenue North, the application has been withdrawn. 4311 Utah, the notification requirements were not met. And 1706 Fatherland is a request to defer. So that's items 5, 6, 18, 20, 22, 25, 30, and 31. And again, 5 will still be heard, it'll just be heard at the end of the, and not a part of the consent.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to accept the agenda changes? End the agenda.
Assume of, Madam Chairman.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
There's a second. All in favor of the motion? Okay. I see and hear none. That motion passes.
As notice to the public, oh, sorry, where is the? As notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. We will read each case out one by one. If you're in opposition of the project or to the project, please raise your hand when we call out the case you would like to be heard. Items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda. So the items for this month, the 1616 16th Avenue South has been removed from the consent agenda. 2623 Ashwood Avenue, new construction of an addition and setback determination. 530 Church Street signage. 1012 Lawrence Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding. 1014 Lawrence Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding. 107 Mockingbird Road, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding. 2116 Pontotock Avenue, new construction of an addition with a setback determination. 1910 Shelby Avenue, an addition. 921 Waldkurch Avenue, an addition to an outbuilding. And staff recommends approval of these items on the consent agenda, with the exception of the cases listed above, with the applicable conditions, finding the applications to meet the design guidelines with their respective overlays.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay. Now that we've heard the consent agenda, any questions other than a motion?
I'm now for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice Chair. There's a second. All in favor? Seeing and hearing none, that motion passes.
Yeah. Thought so too.
Robin, the Bowling House zoning district?
Sorry, Chair, you're correct. I think maybe the slide got out of order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, so this is designation of the Bowling House District. And the designation or the request is to expand the existing district with the 4,100 block and the 4,600 blocks of Nebraska. The overlay was expanded last in 2021, and the request was deferred last month so that the council member could have another community meeting. The proposed 2020, 2022 expansion, the area is similar to the existing overlay in that its residential buildings constructed primarily between 1900 and 1950. The styles are also similar to the existing district, but the forms differ slightly. This area, the buildings are all one and one and a half story, elsewhere in the district you might see two, and they're a little less high style, a little simpler. The two blocks are on opposite ends of the existing overlay, so you could vote on them separately if you wanted to. On its own, the 4,600 block, which is the section that you can barely see on the screen on the left, is 87% contributing, whereas the one on the far right, the 4,100 block, is 41% contributing. The existing part of the district is 76% contributing, so adding both of these would lower that overall number to 70%. But it's really not just about numbers. The 4,100 block is further problematic by having multiple properties with a zero lot line, here are three of them, and they have different owners. So typically where you would see this type of building on one lot where the two different owners shared the entire lot, this is actually two skinny lots with houses butted up against each other. So if they were to be torn down, which they could be because they're non-contributing, and the property owners did not agree on one structure, they wanted to build a separate structure on their two lots, you really wouldn't be able to approve something that met the guidelines because the lots are so narrow, very unusual for this district. Staff suggests the commission recommend the expansion of the Bowling House District to Metro Council, finding the properties meet the criteria of Section 17.36.120A1 and 3 of the ordinance, and recommends adoption of the existing guidelines, finding it meets the requirement of the Secretary of Interior standards. Do you have any questions for me?
Robin, can you go back to the, or someone go back to the first slide so we can take a look at the full, yes, the, the site map? There, thank you. Just make sure we have good vision of that.
Hopefully it shows up a little better on your screens than it does up here. And you received public comment, which was in the folder online on the SharePoint.
Just to clarify, Vice Chair, the council member Murphy has had several community meetings with the properties affected or to be affected?
Yes.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Robin, do you know what the participation rate on the 4,100 block, that 41%, do you know what the participation rate of the property owners was?
I don't. That's not something we keep up with. The council member certainly does because she's, she needs that information to take to council. But since your role is really does it or qualifies or not, it's not really a popularity contest, right? We, that is not something that we keep up with.
Okay.
I will add, for those that are doing math at home, that there's a third more parcels on the south side than there are on the north side, and if those were combined, I think that number would exceed 50%, given the non-contributing nature of...
41% of 4,100 block? It's 41% of the total.
I don't know that that necessarily means you should or shouldn't do it, I just, it's math. And I think 41% might raise an eyebrow, but the reality is that by making those narrow lots, it skews the, the number of parcels eligible to be counted as contributing versus non-contributing.
I know the council, council member Murphy has been working pretty diligently with her community on this, so this would be her recommendation to us, so if we have any other questions. And this is a recommendation to the planning commission, I mean, to the metro, I guess this planning commission also see this?
It's to Metro Council.
Metro Council.
So you'll make a recommendation, one way or the other, to council as to whether or not it qualifies, and planning would make a recommendation as to whether or not it meets the, the plan.
Okay, so it has two other hearings here. So we're on the first step. Okay? Somebody like to make a motion? Oh, yes, sorry. I'm sorry. Public hearing, yes. Applicant, well, it's applicant first. I mean, no, public hearing, yes. Sorry about that. Come on, come on up. Thank you. Please, please state your name and address.
My name is Nancy Miller-Heron, and I own one of those zero lot line properties. And I'm very concerned that, but, you know, if, if, if my property got blown away by a tornado, which could happen, that I wouldn't be able to rebuild at all. And, you know, it would make it where, instead of two families having a home there, only one could. But since we, since the way it is, as was just presented, where it's two little lots, I can't even see how this would be possible. It might be that we would agree, the other homeowner and I would agree, but I think it, I think it's very unfair to those of us, like, I bought this 40 years ago, and I just think it's unfair to those of us who own the zero lot line properties that some kind of accommodation or whatever couldn't be made. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. If you are going to speak, please come to the first row, and that way we can move public hearing.
Hi, I'm John Mayner. I live at 4609 Nebraska, so I'm in the 87%. Just for the record, our council member has met with our block group and the Historical Commission at least three, I think even four times, since the spring. Our block is on board with this. We want to protect it, and we're ready to go through all of the motions to signify our support. So thank you very much for having us and giving us this opportunity. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Steve Moore. I live at 7514 River Road Pike. And, hi Nancy, I haven't seen her in about 40 years, but we own properties side by side there on Nebraska. And so I own one of the zero lot lines there and have since the mid-'80s. And I was, I have the same concerns and would echo what she said. And I was unclear on what was being said earlier as far as the intent goes with those. Is there some consideration that will be given to existing, I guess, non-historical properties that were built within the guidelines and codes so forth for the period they were built in? It does seem unfair that they would not be given some consideration or grandfathered in some way, at least to the extent of the current size and style. I don't think those have been detrimental to the neighborhood. The neighborhood has prospered and grown and developed, and property values have increased tremendously there, like they have all over Nashville. And so it seems like it's sort of penalizing those zero lot line folks that have been there really before Sylvan Park was cool. It was a great, it was a great place. I lived there, Nancy lived there back in the '80s, and it was a great place to live then, and we loved it, and of course, the location and so forth. But it doesn't, it doesn't seem fair. I wondered too if, what are there, 23 or 25 historical overlays in Nashville?
Yes, sir. Around 26.
So do any of those give consideration to existing, quote, I guess, non-historical structures, at least to the extent that they, if, if they had to rebuild, they could build back to a similar style and size, I guess?
Your comments are duly noted. Thank you. Anyone else?
Blaine Bonnady, 1606 Linden Avenue. I think one of the first introductory comments that I got from Historic when I met them, one of the very first meetings that I had with them, is that, you know, why we don't want dormers on all four squares is that we want to promote diversity. And I think that this kind of building type certainly promotes that diversity, to use their own words. And I think there ought to be an exception made to these zero lot lines. If they are brought under, you know, these new rules and something happens to one of those houses, like Robin said, there's no, there's no way for them to build back within those guidelines. So, you know, use the Jeremanning rules or whatever you need to do to take those out. But I think that these people are, you know, being handed a raw deal if they are, you know, meant to abide by these guidelines. I don't think it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, closing public hearing. Commissioners? This is clarification, Robin. So the 4,100 block, there's 41% of those properties that are, that are contributing?
That's correct.
And then 4,600 block, as clarification, 87% of those, which are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, have, you know, are contributing structures. Okay. And then in the middle, there's 76%.
There's 76%, and then if these two were added, it would be lower to 70.
So what we're discussing today is whether we include all of it or we, we recommend 4,100 block versus 4,600 block and the gray. Is, is that clear?
Yes.
Okay, commissioners?
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to speak to some of the issues that have been brought up and concerns that have been brought up specifically to the zero lot lines. I'll hone in on that one. You know, as a body, we're, we're bound to heed the, the base zoning and what the base zoning would require of an applicant if they were a zero lot line and they couldn't get their neighbor to agree. They'd be left with, as I was looking, a 25-foot wide lot. While not common in this neighborhood, they certainly exist in Nashville. And I think this board, at least in my experience, has proven malleable enough that within the guidelines and dealing with, within reality of what it would take to put, to have a minimum three-foot setback, or even to grant a setback that's less than five, I don't know what the base zoning is here, my memory's not that good, but if it were five, we could grant a three. If, that's certainly within our right if it was applied for. And so while it's a narrow house, it wouldn't prohibit an applicant from designing or coming to this board and having something that did fit. It certainly would be more difficult to try to put a house with as much frontage as the others. It's pretty obvious from looking at the lot widths that that wouldn't be possible. But certainly by right, the owners of those lots would, would, we couldn't prevent them from reconstructing something, and I think this board has proven in the past that it's willing to work with an applicant and take into account, this is the way that it was and they're put in a situation, and to take that into account, that something on an unusual lot, and this would qualify in my mind as an unusual lot, that might be granted more quarter. I can't, we're not here to design it for, for, for a particular applicant at this time, but I would say that we've proven in the past that we can make that sausage, I guess, if you will.
Thank you, Commissioner.
May I add one point that I left out? I apologize. Again, what I meant to say when we talked about percentages, it's, it's not just about numbers. And there are, there is the issue with the duplexes, but then there's also the issue that a lot of these homes are one, one story, true one-story, one and a half stories, they're very simple frame structures, which are historic. But my sense from being a part of these meetings is that these owners aren't interested in preserving those historic structures, they're interested in controlling infill, which this does too. But I, I will just say to you, I am concerned that this isn't really the tool that these property owners want, that this doesn't really address what they want. They want to be able to have two-story buildings, they want to be able to pop the top and add an extra level, which won't meet the guidelines. So I think that is something to consider as well.
So, Robin, could you clarify, is this specified to 4,100 block of Nebraska or apply to both sides, 46?
Thank you for asking that. Yes, I'm talking about the 4,100 block. The 4,600 block is a little more, the, the context is a little more consistent with the existing overlay. Lot of one and a halves, but a little bit bigger, not, not as simple. And again, I think the 4,100 block, the historic homes, are definitely worthy of preservation, but I think there also needs to be consideration of, is this the right tool for what the property owners want?
Robin, that's something I thought of earlier that begs, or begs this question, which is, we are not proposing an alternate set of guidelines or something that would be applicable only to the 4,100 block, that...
Correct.
They would apply across the board, but based on interpretation, and I think you're pointing out here that a one and, one and, to the exception, one and a half story form is what would be used when words like adjacent, appropriate...
Yes.
...form, height, as we interpret those things within the guidelines, would be, are important to consider for...
Yes.
...the designation of this, an expansion of this particular block.
And to create new guidelines that would allow that, wouldn't meet the Secretary of Interior standards, so wouldn't meet state legislation. So I, again, I just think that maybe there's, I don't think there is a different tool, but their goals are different than the goals of neighborhood conservation zoning. That's my sense. That's not everyone, but that's my overall sense for the majority of the neighbors.
Any other comments? I'd like to hear that.
So do we have the ability to bifurcate this and, okay, and approve one section and not the other? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, with that information, I feel comfortable approving 4,600 block of Nebraska, including with historic zoning expansion. However, 4,100 block of Nebraska need more thorough community outreach and appropriate preservation mechanism, because we can, or this block can use neighborhood conservation instead of historic zoning overlay. So it might be a little bit more suitable for their pilot and what the community want. So I am in favor of Commissioner Cotton's suggestion to approve only 4,600 block of Nebraska and consider 4,100 block later when it's appropriate.
Comment, Commissioner Johnson. So this is an NCZO, it's not a historic. It's an NCZO, just to clarify that.
What I meant by was a contextual overlay for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And another question for Robin, if I could. In the 4,100 block, there's the row with the zero lot lines, and then there's the row of houses behind it. Is there a differentiation that we're aware of as far as, we don't really know, I guess, what the property owner's preference is, that's what the council person correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was a little garbled. So there's the row with the, the block, the side of the street with the zero lot lines, then there's the side of the street and the 4,100 block that's not the zero lot lines. My question is, is there less consternation from the folks across the street from the zero lot lines as far as, or their preference to the, when you say the tool doesn't work for the folks with the zero lot line, does it work for the folks across the street?
I understand that. And so there's really kind of two answers for that. Again, we haven't kept track with who is in favor and who is not. I'm just going off the general conversations that were in these meetings and the concerns that there are many buildings here that I don't think people would want to keep. And then the other piece of that is when we're creating boundaries, we do try to not cut it down the middle of the street, because it's a little unfair that one person has to follow, and then the people across the street aren't following it. And we try to, to cut it at corners, so we try not to cut down the middle of a block either. That's not a rule, that's just generally how we're looking at it.
One more clarification. The highlighted properties are the ones that are zero lot line, correct?
That's right.
And then the other grayish properties are contributing? Some maybe, some not?
Yeah, just 41% of the total is contributing. And so this map doesn't specify which ones are and which ones are not.
I do question when you express that the intentions of that particular part of the neighborhood, that's, isn't totally preservation? Is, I'm not, I'm not clear about that. So, and again, I think I'm going to echo what Commissioner Mosley has said, is that in the past and how we have looked at projects is that we, you know, are very thoughtful in terms of how it is built, an infill with the context of historic. So, you know, even if we're looking at a couple of those, I still want the commission to think about how this affects the larger NCZO, as to if a property was taken down, what is going to be rebuilt.
Madam Chairman, as I, as I look at this situation, it's, it's a little, I think we're a little bit unfortunate that we don't have the councilwoman here to really explain to us what the, what the intent of the, of the council was. I know that in Mr. Pickering's letter, that was in the public comment, he said the Sylvan Park Neighbor Association gave unanimous support to it. But, but we don't know what's happening with, with this block. Given that there are concerns about these and that most of the houses are one and a half stories, the, the ones that are, that we've seen that are the zero lot line are two stories, I think it could create some real problems in the future. It seems to me that we don't lose anything by going ahead and approving the 4,600 block today. That doesn't keep the 4,100 block from coming back next month or, you know, whenever they're able to clarify and, and get consensus on that block.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Not to back up from what you said, because I agree with you, Commissioner, but, so, and I'm not sure where the 41 comes, my math works a little different, but there are 20 parcels, and, and 40% is eight of those, so eight of the total 20 would be contributing, which is, is eight of 20. That's, that's the straight numbers of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's contributing, which does not speak to Commissioner Ziegler's point of worthy of, or desire for preservation, or conservation.
Okay. Any comment? Comment?
I think I see where this is heading and I concur with Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Stewart, that perhaps it might be best to just approve the forty-six hundred and leave the, or is it opposite, the forty-one hundred alone?
Okay.
Can I make a motion to that?
Just want to make sure everybody's weighed in. Commissioner Williams?
Seems like we have a situation where the tool being proposed is not sufficient to deal with the issues of the forty-one hundred block. So I would concurrence say that we move forward with the forty-six hundred block and then come back and revisit forty-one hundred if they decide to present.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I will, based on that as well. I have run into neighbors throughout the city that have searched for tools to achieve a certain goal and not been able to find one within our, you know, all of our tools are imperfect to some extent. And so, so this may ultimately wind up between the neighbors and the councilwoman, decide that it's the best tool, but I think given some more time for them to decide, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, Madam Chair, I approve that we expand the Bowling House district to the forty-six hundred block and, and exclude the forty-one for now.
Okay. We're making the recommendation to Metro Council.
Okay.
There is a motion by Commissioner Mahal?
Second.
There's a second by either one? All in favor of the motion? Okay. I hear and see none opposed and that motion passes. Thank you for the ones who came through from the neighborhood. Appreciate you. Please consider talking to your council member, continue to do that. Thank you.
So now it's my turn. So the first violation day is at nineteen fourteen Russell Street. This is an infill that's currently under construction. The commission approved the infill in December of last year, so December of twenty-twenty-one. The permit was issued December fifteenth of twenty-twenty-one as well. At the condition of the approval, as, yeah, sorry, as a condition of approval, the commission requested that staff approve the brick prior to purchase and install. It was also noted multiple times on the permit that we needed to review any masonry, again, prior to purchase or install. In this case, staff did not, was not notified what masonry they intended to use. So this, sorry, this brick was found and was installed and staff did find this during a site visit. There is a whitewash type of face on it. Typically, this is not approved. Staff looks for more reddish type bricks when looking at masonry. Sorry, so weird tie day. So based on the plans that were submitted, the applicant does intend to paint the brick in this type of district. We do not review paint, masonry, but review masonry color and texture. The paint, sorry. Staff finds that painted brick historic red could be a good alternative to all removal. As installed though, the masonry does not meet section four of the guidelines for materials. So staff recommends disapproval of the brick installed without review and recommends that the violation of nineteen fourteen Russell Street be corrected within sixty days of the commission's decision in one of the following ways. The bricks be painted historic red color that is approved prior to application, or the bricks be removed and replaced with a brick that's approved prior to purchase and install. Staff finds that the bricks do not meet section four of Part One of the Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Design Guidelines for Turn of the Twenty-Second Century Districts for Materials. Any questions?
We may have some later. Thank you.
The applicant is here.
Thank you. Applicant?
My name is Whitney McRoy. Thank you all. While we don't disagree that the whitewash on the brick does not meet the guidelines and that was a misunderstanding from the owner as far as she felt like if she was painting it, that that, all other aspects of the brick do appear to meet the guidelines, it's just that whitewash on there. And so we do anticipate painting the brick. The main thing that we have proposed is to have a Greek villa color versus the bright historic red color. We feel like that would be more aesthetically compatible and complementary to the zone and the surrounding structures.
Any questions to the applicant?
What color is that you said?
It's Sherwin-Williams Greek Villa. It's kind of a creamy color and it's very similar to the structure that was there previously.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? So let's get a little bit more clarification, just to be sure we're on the same path. So under this particular NCZO, we do or do not review paint?
We do not review the paint of masonry, but we review masonry color.
Do you hear? Kelly, please say that one more time.
Very quiet person. So in this district, we do not review painting of masonry, but we review the color of the masonry itself. That makes sense.
So then the issue here is you weren't able to review the masonry before it was installed?
Yes, we did not review it prior to install. Staff found it when we were doing a site visit.
It's another tricky one. Commissioners? Last year?
Kelly, has the brick been installed now?
It has, yes.
Okay.
You know, in general, another comment from the chair is that when, when, I think when permits are issued and, and again, this is more a, you know, not a warning, but just to say that when you're looking at your permit and it says that these particular items need to be approved by the staff, it is questioning how a permit cannot be read that way. It's not just this applicant, but we do get this quite a bit where more, more often than not, so I think this is probably a public hearing, is that when you are looking at your permit, please look at that very carefully. And if there's anything to be reviewed, is to discuss it with our staff. Period.
Bring it, Commissioner.
Yeah, well, I'm going to state the obvious. I, I don't want to, the staff needs to be able to review these things and, and are not needs to, it's a requirement. And it, it didn't, it did not occur. But I'm going to state, I think, the obvious here, which is if we don't review the painting of masonry and they put a red brick up and then they paint it, we don't have purview over that. I guess someone could clean the brick and then it would be red. I'm not sure exactly how this, this looks like, it's general shale brick and what would happen if the parge coat or, you know, whatever the factory applied coating is on that, that if it were blasted off, that it would be a red brick again? It seems absurd to do that, but
And would somebody do that?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, I don't want to make light of our guidelines, but we're, we're, we're adjudicating the absurd here. So now that that's out of the way, anybody else? I mean, the other
The elephant in the room.
It, it's certainly in your guidelines that you review materials, but the concept of reviewing brick color in a neighborhood conservation zoning overlay where you don't review paint color is more of a policy that came about maybe fifteen years ago or so than a very specific design guideline?
Madam Chair, so I think I understand where the conversation is going. So of course, this is clearly violation, because this is a new infill and the applicant, you know, property owner or contractor, whomever should come to the body and then ask for the approval that's given. But however, so in this instance, I'm trying to clearly understand if the applicant were to install appropriate brick and then our body, you approve the brick, the staff approved the brick, and then later on, if they come up with paint, you do not review the paint color, correct?
That is correct. And the, the purpose, from what I understand, because this is before my time, but the purpose of this policy is that maybe someday, as you were talking about, someone might remove the paint and then if the brick color had not been approved initially, then it might be an inappropriate color.
I think we
So to boil it down, we're not deciding a paint color here, we're deciding on what to do with the violation.
Right. You are right on.
Okay.
But that decision might entail the paint color.
Yes.
And just as, and aside with this, one of the things that has been pretty appalling to me is that there are some beautiful, beautiful red brick homes all throughout this city and they are, have been there for, you know, sometimes a hundred or more years. And it seems like the latest fad has been to paint them all white. And now the latest fad is to paint them all black, including the shutters and the doors and the hardware and everything else. You know, and, and those are fads. Those houses will not be wonderful, you know, a hundred years from now, like the ones that we know and love that have been around for a hundred years or more. That's just an aside with this, you know, it doesn't apply necessarily directly to this particular situation, but it, it is a fear that I have, is that we'll become an all painted brick city. Does anybody have a motion for this? I'm going to throw this out and invite comments, suggestions, that kind of thing. With regard to nineteen fourteen Russell Street, we as a commission understand and appreciate the staff recommendation. We are disappointed that the process was not followed and the appropriate materials were not submitted for review prior to installation. However, with respect to this project, we feel that having the owner paint the bricks one color and then be allowed to paint it a different color would not be productive. And we therefore withdraw the, the disapproval and the corrective action required by this motion.
There is a motion on the floor.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I would just further admonish the applicant, don't do this again. If it says you need to get something approved, get it approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Kelly? If there were I'm sorry.
There's a motion on the floor. So
I can't ask questions.
We just need a second before you continue discussion.
Let's have a second or, or else it'll be shut down if there's no second.
Second.
There's a second? Okay, so let's do this. Let's, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
But we can have discussion before the vote.
Oh, yeah, oh, sure, sure, sure. Sorry, but Commissioner.
Thank you. Kelly, if they were to come to you today and bring you the materials that they used with red, a red color, would you approve those materials?
You mean like if they brought red brick in, would we approve it? Or if they brought this in? If they brought red brick in, that we try to prove, I try to prove
Okay, so when the material is, okay, got you. Thank you.
But you would not approve this brick?
It would be material. It would be material. It would be material. The staff recommends or, or reviews materials, not the paint, but the material.
Exactly. And so these bricks, if they brought in and they were red, it would be approved?
Correct. Correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, so there was a motion, there's a second, any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. So there's one, two, three, four, all those opposed? Two are opposed. And that motion passes, correct? We have a quorum. All right? Okay. Applicant? There you have it. And hopefully in public that you will hear that this commission is very aware of when these things happen, so please follow directions and your instructions and your design guidelines, because this is very hard on us as well. Thank you. Hopefully your neighbors are not going to come back to us. So if we do, we're going to send them to you.
Thank you. So the second violation today is seven hundred and eight Monroe Street. This is a non-contributing building in Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. This structure went in front of the commission earlier this year for the covered seating areas that were installed without permits or review. The current violation is a fence and two gates that were installed without permits or review, and that do not meet the guidelines. The applicant requests to keep both the fence and the gates. So the fence itself faces Rosa Parks as well as an alley. The fence measures ten feet tall, according to plans, where staff measured it at about ten foot eight inches. The gate within the fence measures about eight, eight feet from grade. There's another gate that was installed that's facing Monroe Street, that's in the one, lower right hand on my side. This measures about eight foot eleven inches from grade. The guidelines allow, allow rear privacy fences to be a maximum of six, six feet in height. The fence exceeds this by about ten feet, by about four feet. Legal representation stated that the fence, fence was installed to hide a dumpster and for security reasons. Typical commercial dumpsters are between four and a half to six feet tall, so six foot tall fence should be able to conceal it. Security measures might include, security measures that could be used as well to include motion detecting lights, cameras, and spiky plates in front of the fence as well as other means. So staff recommends disapproval and recommends, excuse me, staff recommends disapproval and recommends a requirement to correct the violation within sixty days of the commission's decision by either removing the fence and gates or reducing the height of all to no more than six feet from grade. Either solution would meet section three E five of the Germantown Historic Preservation Guidelines for Fences. Get any questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
Legal representation is here as well.
Yes, please. Come forward, applicant. Name and address, sir.
Good afternoon, board. Good to see everyone again. Quan Pool, five eleven Union Street, Suite twenty-seven hundred. I have the applicant here. I think she's going to say a few words as well. So this is the first, the first of two cases where I'll see you all today. I think there are a couple important things to note about this, this request. The first is that, you know, this is a non-contributing structure. I think it's also important that the, the property itself is, is on the boundary line of being outside of the historic district, right? So if you cross over to Rosa Parks, which I think is about a, maybe a sixty-foot wide right of way, you know, there's no ability to review. And so what you have here is a commercial property that's sort of stuck within a residential historic preservation overlay. There are significant concerns of the property owner related to people who have broken to, to this commercial operation. They've stolen things and it's, it's very difficult to do that with, with a six-foot privacy fence. The other thing that's at issue is, is when you talk to the neighbors on either side, and I think you have some letters in your package, you know, you know, they don't want to see a dumpster. They've, they've made it clear that they enjoy seeing, having the privacy fence there because it means that they don't have to see all of the things that are related to the back-of-house issues that comes with the commercial property. Again, it, it's somewhat different if, if this was a residential structure. But, but this is a restaurant that's been operating since the 80s. So, so almost 40 years. And it's been in that same location, it's been in that spot. And, and these are the operations, the commercial, the, the things that come along with a commercial operation. And so if the property was, was just on the other side of Rosa Parks, there wouldn't be any ability to review some of these, these criteria. And so I, I think it's important to keep that in mind. It's important to, to think about how this is on the edge of the overlay as opposed to being right there in the core of it and, and as opposed to being next to other residential properties. The other thing is, because I think what is sort of triggering this review is the idea that this is a, you know, quote-unquote, rear yard. Where, well, there's, there's really nothing associated with this property that's a yard. The entire lot is surface parking, completely asphalt. And then you have those back-of-house operations for which the, the property owner is trying to protect from, from the, the public view. I, I think it's a nice wooden fence. It's, it's been taken care of. What was there before was a chain-link fence that had, I think, like a makeshift shrubbery or greenery that was sort of taped to the outside of the fence. So, so I think it's an improvement. I think it's an improvement that both the law firm across the street as well as the funeral home that's adjacent to the property would support. And so I know I've got a little bit more time left. We'd like to reserve two more minutes for rebuttal and then I'm going to let the, the applicant speak.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Naima Walker Fears. I'm the majority owner of Pub Partners, doing business as Germantown Pub, 708 Monroe Street. As Quanpool indicated, the prior fence, which was 6 feet, not only was it chain-linked, it was, was very flimsy. So we essentially have, have two concurrent problems. One being the visibility of the trash. The dumpster is 6 feet tall. It has legs, so it's actually more than 6 feet. The problem is that if the dumpster is full, the trash on the dumpster exceeds the roughly 6 and 1/2 feet, right? Consistently since COVID, we've gone through three dump truck companies because they frequently miss pickups. Sometimes it's a truck problem, more frequently it's a lack of workers. The result is if the fence is less than 8 feet, not only can the law offices of Rich McGee see the trash from their meetings and offices, you can see the trash if you're standing in Kroger's parking lot across the street. So we are, you know, we're on a major commercial thoroughfare. I happen to be an attorney. I couldn't figure out why the overlay indicated that 6-feet privacy was to a yard and that, that our property could ever be construed as a yard. It is all pavement. There's the alley. And then you have Rosa Parks, which I know is, you know, one of the most frequently traveled, traveled streets in the city. So essentially, you know, it was a terrible eyesore. I, I know cost is not necessarily an issue, but, you know, we put up a beautiful fence that the neighbors are very happy about. The other related issue, independent of, obviously, we've got cameras and when the alarms are tripped, I get called in the middle of the night and, and I'm okay with that if someone breaks in. We've had multiple break-ins. But as importantly, maybe more importantly than the break-ins are, you know, that corridor unfortunately has had a, had a homelessness problem. And so homeless people would go behind the fence and over the fence to do things that may not necessarily have been stealing property, but, you know, were often, you know, pretty disgusting. So, you know, sort of looking at it as a commercial business owner and frankly, looking at it as a lawyer who tried to understand the overlay, I don't, I, I honestly don't understand where the 4 feet along the alley and the 2 feet along the gates. And the gates are intentionally smaller so that the, they can be opened easily. They have wheels on them for the dump truck company. I'm just not quite sure how, why the, the provision of the overlay would, would, would be applied to a fence that's beautifying the neighborhood and providing additional security. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fears. Okay. Open public hearing? We have some time for your rebuttal if you have any. Close public hearing? Okay. I'm going to hold comment until the commission debates.
I'm assuming we can't, it's not within our purview to punish the applicant for reminding us that the 80s were 40 years ago, right? No, can't do that?
No.
So, did I understand her correctly when she said that this fence would be okay if it was a residential fence? No, that's not right? Okay, so. Okay.
I have a question to the, our legal representative. I think in residential zone, I think the height of the fence is, if I'm not mistaken, 6 feet. But is there a height of the fence in a commercial usage zone? Is it 8 foot or 10 foot?
Let me try to find that. I don't know the answer right now.
So just to clarify, so we are not talking about the material, just strictly the height?
Madam Chair, I have a question too.
Yes, for sure.
So then, maybe Ms. Sigler knows, the height's the same for, the height is due to the overlay, not, there's no differentiation, differentiation between a commercial or residential for us?
For the overlay, no, there's no differentiation. Yes, that's correct.
I think we're waiting on legal.
Well, it's too bad we can't. We can't. It's too bad we can't legislate color because it would look much better if it matched the color of the commercial building. But since I have learned that we don't legislate color.
That might be done under another overlay. Since Germantown has historic overlay versus an CZO, do we or don't we? I mean, that's-
You do not review paint on wood surfaces. So you are correct.
Oh, any other discussion? I mean, this is a, yeah. It's a violation under the current design guidelines. Just saying.
Yeah, I am a bit struggling because, you know, under our, you know, design guideline with this historic zoning area, yes, the height limit is 6 foot. However, this is non-residential use and non-contributing. But at the same time, is it okay for us to, just because it's already non-contributing, further, you know, introduce non-contributing object into that particular parcel? So I am a little bit struggling in both sides. I do understand applicant's reasoning. But I think we have to have, you know, follow certain guidelines as well. Even though non-contributing, when new material or a new construction is installed, we should follow to accommodate as close to the guideline instead of further introducing non-contributing object. So that's what I'm kind of struggling. So I think legal had an answer for me.
I, I would like to tie this to a code provision, but I will say that Code's website describes a maximum 8-foot height for fences on the side of rear setback. It doesn't differentiate between commercial or residential.
And that's also codes, which is different from what we have here. So that would be the, the code requirement per zoning. And, and ours are more restrictive because of the historic guidelines.
I do appreciate the applicant's logic and reason in terms of why this was built higher than a 6-foot. I, I do, this is my neighborhood as well and I do drive this every day. So again, like I, I said, I, I hear the logic. I know that is on the fence here because, again, we're, you know, we're under guidelines, but yet it's a commercial property. And I think that's, I'm going to say that for the moment. And it may go beyond, you know, usage or whatever and how the neighborhood environment is. So again, there's some logic to it.
So since legal said it's under the cause, it's the fence's rear of the property allow up to 8 feet. So I am kind of leaning towards accommodating 8-foot fence. 10-foot would be too much. So if, since it's locating in the rear of the property and since this is a commercial property, I am kind of leaning towards accepting 8-foot, not as is. But I'm interested, you know, other commissioners' opinion as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Yeah, this is really hard for us rule follower folks. Because, I mean, obviously, it seems like this is what's needed at the property. It seems like the neighbors are happy with it. And yet, here we are again, stuck where our guidelines suggest we disapprove it. I think, you know, potentially Commissioner Johnson's suggestion could be a middle ground somewhere. But, you know, says the guy who voted against the painted brick last time. But anyway, I'm struggling with this too.
Okay.
Duly noted. Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, I'm not inclined generally to look at the guidelines written for a reason and they should be followed. But I think in this case, if I could, so we can get on to other issues on, on the agenda, I would make the following motion. Given that the adjacent building appears to be at the property line and is a vacant sort of windowless facade and, and creates this opaque situation that this fence would continue. And given the commercial nature and zoning of the property and that the fence does not contrast greatly with that for a commercial, that we would, in this case, allow an 8-foot fence, which would meet the base zoning code, which would be 2 feet taller than the guidelines for the specific property in this instance for security and to screen, specifically to screen the trash.
Yes. Is that a motion?
It is.
Okay. There's a motion?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay. We have one opposition. However, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Up next, we have 708 Monroe Street. This is an application for an addition at 708 Monroe where you just reviewed the fence. The addition is sited within the setback, so it requires a setback determination. The proposed addition is a shipping container with metal siding to be installed at the northeast corner of the lot inside the fencing that you just reviewed. The primary issue with the proposed work is the location. Although the existing non-contributing building faces onto Rosa Parks Boulevard, this lot is oriented towards Monroe. The addition will be constructed on the rear of the lot, 3 feet from both the interior side property line and the rear property line along the alley. While the commission has reduced rear setbacks to 3 feet for smaller outbuildings, this is in addition to the primary structure. Staff does not find it appropriate to reduce or acquire 20-foot rear setback along the alley for a primary structure to just 3 feet. This entire 16-foot-deep addition is proposed to sit within the 20-foot rear setback. The guidelines list circumstances where a setback determination may be appropriate and the situation does not meet any of those conditions. As a note, on the interior side, the zoning allows for a zero setback. However, any new construction needs to be a full 6 feet from the outbuilding next door due to fire code. I went out and measured and it seems like it's about 5 and 1/2 feet from that outbuilding to where the fence is now. I couldn't find any property stakes, so not positive that that's where the property line is. But if new construction is approved here in this location, it will need to scooch maybe about 6 inches. It would just need to be a full 6 feet from that, that structure on the next property for fire code. The applicant submitted these pictures to indicate potential metal siding options. If the commission determines that new construction is appropriate within the rear setback, staff finds that the proposed materials could be appropriate in this location but should be reviewed when the final material is selected. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of proposed addition, finding that it does not meet the base zoning setbacks or Section 3E 2 of the Germantown Design Guidelines. And if the commission does determine that construction is appropriate within the setback, I do have some conditions that we will bring up at that point.
Any question?
Yes.
Would this proposed structure be within the fenced area, fenced area?
Yes. It would be where that red box is there, which is pretty much right where the fence is. I think if you look here, maybe it's not showing well there. Maybe I didn't include it in the presentation, but there is a site plan that shows the fence. And the fence, I think it was here, just got cut off. So you can see the gate there in the front. If you look below the blue box, there's the gate. So this is sitting within that fence.
Okay, thank you.
That makes sense. Any other questions for me? Okay.
Hold that thought. Applicant?
Good afternoon, again, Quanpool 511, Union Street, Suite 2700. And so, you know, this property, you know, as I indicated earlier, is, is number one, it's, it's a non-contributing structure, has been operating in this location since 1985 as a restaurant. And so I think it's important to note, and I, I think Ms. Warren spoke to it, is that although it has a Monroe Street address, the property is oriented toward Rosa Parks. And so under the, the, the base zoning guidelines, if, if we were to treat Rosa, the, the street for which it is oriented towards, if we were to treat that as a front, there would be a 0-foot side setback, which would, you know, fit completely within, in this area. Or, excuse me, this location. And then if you look, I think you can even see on the previous, the picture from the previous slide, the, the adjacent property, which is a funeral home, the proposed addition would be essentially flush with that, with that outbuilding structure there, which is substantially taller and, and wider in length than what the addition would be. And so that, that structure, which, which is also non-contributing and, and predates the, the installation of the, the overlay, has been in that, that location for a number of years. I, I think, so when looking at the, the instances when this commission can make a setback determination, I, I would, you know, disagree with Ms. Warren that it's, it's not appropriate in this case. And so specifically, I would look towards, it states, "When the original setbacks of light structures historically found on the site as determined by historic maps, site plans, and photographs." And so when you look at the, the property, the commercial property that is directly adjacent to this property, that addition, again, although it predates the installation of the overlay in 2008, has been at that- in 2008, has been at that location for a number of years. And so that, that outbuilding, I, I think it's a crematory, sits about three foot off of the, the, the alley, which is the exact location of, of this proposal. Secondly, the, the board, excuse me, the commission has the authority to make a setback determination when the shape and, and the size of the lot makes, makes meeting the bulk standards unreasonable. And so all of this is, in addition, I think it's important to know why this particular location was, was selected. It's an expansion of their kitchen. Fortunately, the, the business at this, this location is, is going quite well, but they have a lot of trouble servicing their customers in a, such a small, tight fit. And so while there are other portions of the property that have space that's adequate for them to expand, to be able to expand the kitchen, they would not be able to do so without significant, significant overhaul of the restaurant itself. And so really, to expand the kitchen, this is really the only location. And I, I think that the, the thing that I want to point out, like, that is sort of the purpose of this board. That is the purpose of your ability to be able to make setback determinations. Because this property was placed in an overlay, it doesn't have the ability to go to the BZA for variance requests, right? Essentially, that's what this is.
It looked like it was off there.
No, it's okay. And making that determination, these are the factors that, that you would consider. It's a non-contributing structure. It's been in this location for a number of years. And the, the, really, the hardship is that to expand the kitchen, there's only one potential place that you can do that, and that's right there in that spot which abuts the, the alley. And although it's, it's classified as a rear setback per the code, because it's, you know, Monroe is the, the street with the shortest frontage, operationally, from a, from a user experience, when you're looking at that structure from Rosa Parks, it's, it's the side. And CS zoning has, has a zero-foot side setback. I, I, I think these are the, the cases where there is a reasonable alternative that can be proposed that both meets the, the standards and the policy set out in, in the, in the guidelines, but then also allows a property owner who's been, who's been in this location well before the establishment of the overlay to be able to expand their operations to fit the current need. And, you know, finally, with it not being a historic structure, it is a non-contributing structure, that there is no denigration of, of the, the structure that's there now. So with all those things, we would ask that you approve the, the kitchen expansion for this location. And certainly, if you have any questions, let me know. And like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal if there's any, any opposition.
Do you have any questions? Yes.
Yeah, I do. So when we say kitchen operations, is this containing, like, cooking? Or is it storage and cold storage and dunage and those kinds of things? We don't have any pervy overuse, but I'm just, like, we look in big mushrooms caps coming out the side of the front and what sort of, there's some health department things and some other things that might influence what this inevitably looks like that involve appearance.
Right. So, and I'll, I'll defer to, to my client, but, but as I understand it, that it will be outfitted with plumbing and electrical, and there will be, you know, your typical food prep, cooking services in, in that particular area. But I'll, I'll let her speak to, to that question because she certainly is the fact-based expert, not me.
Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Very quickly, he's correct. It'd be a combination of, threefold, prep, storage and electrical cooking base. The existing gas line and hood would stay where they are, but there would be refrigeration and an oven and essentially a cooktop put in one section of the potential new building.
Thank you, Ms. Fears. Any other questions?
Applicant? I do have one question.
Sorry, yes.
So staff suggested, you know, we have to follow fire code. So fire department requires six-foot separation from adjacent building. So do you have the ability to shift those container building?
I do, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of order, I'm a semi, I'm not an expert, but I think it's three feet, just so we're talking about what, it's a requirement of three feet for the adjacent property owner and three feet for this owner. It would be maybe considered a taking. Again, I'm outside of my lane a little bit. If we were to require six, I, I just don't, I don't think that's accurate. I think three is the number.
I think that might have been also in our report about the three foot.
It's something that's come up before, where maybe someone, the neighboring property didn't meet the three feet, and people were very upset. So we've been trying to maintain that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We didn't count your two minutes, but here we go. All right. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Okay. I mean, it does say, um, recommendation that however, due to the fire code issue, the addition needs to be a full six foot from the neighboring outbuilding. Right?
Means the fire marshal will be insulted on that? That would be the ultimate determinant?
We're, we're just trying to make people happy. Fire code wants six feet, neighbors want at least six feet, so, and I think that the applicant said it could be moved without changing any of their programming inside, so.
Noted.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Everybody's thinking about, I can't, I hate keep breaking, you know, our guideline. However, this is a really unique situation, especially facing Eighth Avenue. So uniquely addresses Monroe. So if we are facing, you know, Eighth Avenue, like a zero setback, and also especially already the outbuilding in adjacent property, which is literally three feet. So, and this new building is within that fenced-in location, and this establishment need expansion of the kitchen. So considering all this applicant reasoning for expansion and setback determination, I am very swayed by of that opinion. So I am in favor of allowing this setback determination is with this condition with to meet fire department guideline, six feet from adjacent property.
I think also, in, in our other project reviews, you know, when we look at a historic structure, which this is not, that this particular structure is not permanent. So it can also be removed as we opinion of that with other infills or attachments or additions. So just want to throw that out.
There was a, there was a reference to, because it's the shorter side that becomes the front. It's been a minute. Is that how, is that the interpretation? Or is that, that is the determinant in terms of which?
Yes.
Face legally, I guess, or for, for application of zoning?
Yes.
Interpretation, that's how it's determined, is which, whichever is the shorter face.
That's coming from the planning department.
Got it. Forgive me for also not paying better attention. Does the staff take issue? I know the setback is, is the main recommendation for not meeting the base zoning setback. Is the, what, what other objections are there in terms of materiality and, and form and such? Can, can you just refresh the discussion, please?
Sure. In general, it was the setback issue. Staff felt that massing-wise, in terms of materials, what is being proposed could be appropriate if the commission found that building within the setback was appropriate. So maybe this would be inappropriate. I feel like I keep using that word, but maybe, maybe this would be an appropriate moment for me to say, if you are leaning that direction, we did have a couple of conditions that we would suggest. One being that the new construction should be the full six feet from the neighboring structure. One, that the final materials must be reviewed by staff. And then that we would review the utility locations as per usual. One of the other things quickly just popped into mind, we talk about the proportion of openings. This is the elevation that faces the alley, so the rear elevation doesn't have as many openings as we typically like to see, but in this location, we felt like that would be appropriate. Again, if you felt that construction in the setback was appropriate in this case. Is that helpful?
Yes. Given the applicant's description of some of the things that are going to occur in this kitchen, additionally, the, I don't think the roof will look like what's depicted. There'll be some significant mechanical equipment that'll be at the roof. And, you know, on a commercial building, a residential building, those things usually sit on the ground and mechanical equipment, you know, big things hanging out of the roof and, and whatever those things might be or not, just, it's not something that, that we review, different situation. And so I think where the mechanical units are located, the fact that there's a fence, there's lots of clearances and other things that are, that are going on there. If it has a mechanical screen on the front of it, or maybe those things are located in an area where, where it just won't affect the appearance or the roofline of the structure. But to add all of those accoutrements that are generally unsightly onto something like this that, you know, will be visible from the right away, I think would require, if we were to approve something like this, I think certainly have those things reviewed and approved by the staff. If they required screening, or screening were appropriate, that the applicant needs to come back and, and at least have, have some dealing with aesthetics and, and what the form of this thing might look like, that, that would need some additional review, not necessarily by this board, but certainly by the staff if we were leaning in the direction of approving this.
Thank you. Duly noted. Okay. Commissioner Johnson? You want to try it?
I will give it a try. In regarding to 708 Monroe Street, I approve, I make motion to approve a three-foot setback determination. And with condition of, of the material design, applicant father walk with the staff and get approval before start construction.
Second the motion.
Okay. First and second. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Seeing none and hearing none.
I, I apologize. You probably said this and I missed it. Did you mention the six feet or is that not a part of the motion?
Please include six feet as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Approve the amended motion. Okay. All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Seeing none? That passes. Okay. Thank you, applicant. Please continue to work with staff. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. The next case is 1806 Cedar Lane. For 1806 Cedar Lane, the applicant proposes a rear addition that extends wider than the historic house. The Montgomery House at 1806 Cedar Lane is a circa 1860 contributing home in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. According to the National Register of Historic Places nomination for this neighborhood, the home at 1806 Cedar Lane is the oldest building within the district and was part of the Montgomery Plantation owned by Colonel A.B. Montgomery. The Montgomery Plantation and the estate of Colonel and Mrs. Joseph Ackland were subdivided into what is now Belmont Hillsborough. The main plantation house on the property was burned during the Civil War. The original use of the remaining structure that is there today at 1860 Cedar Lane is unclear, but it appears that it may have been some sort of dwelling on the plantation, given its size and form. According to the 1914 sandboard on the left, the original footprint of the house appears to just include the primary two-story brick structure and the front porch. It appears that a modest one-story rear addition and one-story side porch were added, and the original front porch was removed sometime between 1914 and 1931. These changes can be seen on the 1931 sandboard that's there on the right of the screen. Sometime between 1931 and the establishment of the overlay, the one-story side porch was enclosed and a rear addition was added, which can be seen in this image. Both rear additions were removed from the house without a preservation permit in July of 2022, but a retroactive staff permit was later issued for the demolition of the rear additions. Today, the applicant proposes a 2,546-square-foot addition to the original 834-square-foot two-story brick house, or approximately 1,900 square feet of the recently removed additions are also included as an original footprint. In the past, the commission has taken existing additions into consideration when reviewing the footprint of a new addition. That being said, the proposed addition more than doubles the footprint of the existing structure, regardless of whether the recently demolished additions are considered. Though the applicant did not include an outbuilding with the submission, the applicant has discussed the possibility of an outbuilding, and that outbuilding could be up to 1,000 square feet. Staff has noted the potential size and a potential location of the outbuilding on this slide for reference, towards the left of the screen there. Depending on size and location, staff is concerned that due to the depth of the addition, a proposed outbuilding may not be able to meet the 20-foot separation requirement. The addition is located at the rear of the house as required by the design guidelines. The addition does not extend taller than the historic house, but it does extend wider than the historic house by approximately 10 feet on the left side. And so that's the, the side closest to the bottom of the screen there. Staff finds that a wider addition in this case may be possible if the addition had, had an appropriate overall scale and massing. Part of the portion that extends wider than the historic, uh, part of the portion that extends wider than the historic house has a two-story form, and the one-story portion has a flat roof. Staff finds that any wider portion should be entirely one-story with a gable roof in order to be compatible with the historic house and visually minimal from the street. Also, the foundation height of the addition, specifically the portion that goes wider, is taller than the foundation height of the historic house. Because the addition more than doubles the existing footprint, staff recommends removal of the section of the addition that extends wider than the historic house as the most appropriate location to begin decreasing the size of the addition. The, the proposed addition connects to the existing house with a narrow connector piece that is appropriately inset, and that connector piece can kind of be seen there behind the historic house and, um, just to the left of the addition on the top. And the proposed addition incorporates some contemporary detailing, which staff finds can be appropriate because it helps to differentiate the proposed addition from the historic house and because the addition is pulled off of the historic house with, with that connector piece that I discussed previously. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposed addition, finding that the proposal does not meet Sections 2B, 1A and B, and 2B, 2F for height and scale. Section 2B, 2A for location, or Sections 2B, 1E and 2B, 2F for roof shape, for roof shape of the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. I'm happy to take any questions, and I know the applicant is here as well.
Thank you for the added history of the property.
Of course.
This is very interesting. Thank you for that, staff. Applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. My address is 1702 Linden Avenue, there in Belmont. We as a firm are really excited to be part of this project. I've lived in the neighborhood for 34 years, so 16, 1806 Cedar is truly unique, and we're honored to be working with Tanner Rollins on this project. Tanner Rollins is the developer. Tanner Rollins is the developer and contractor and he's worked on other projects in the neighborhood before. Our design goals here were simple, to preserve the historic part of this house with limited demolition and a limited connection. And that's not often the case with a lot of projects. They can get rather invasive. To construct, to strip away the additions and to construct a modern addition with similar massing and materials that would highlight the historic house. And some of those additions were removed and I have a letter from Metro Codes about cleaning the property and removing the trash and the shed on the back. So I think Mr. Rollins removed all this in thinking that's what Metro Codes wanted him to do. As you can see from the photographs, those additions are there. We did document all of that prior to those being removed later this summer. So the design challenges with this particular property relate to the fact that we've got this sort of amazing two-story, four-room masonry structure. We have thick masonry walls. We have small rooms. They vary between 250 and 270 square feet each. We have minimal window openings and a really sort of amazing central four chimney stack, which we also want to maintain. So as you guys know well, it is always our goal to collaborate with staff. This is certainly one of the most sensitive projects we've ever worked on and we've worked on a lot of them. So obviously, our discussions began really early once Mr. Rollins secured the property. So we met to review footprint options back in August. We presented options to Joseph and left those for the entire staff to review. It's worth noting, this is a very large lot. This lot is 12,959 square feet. You know, most lots in the neighborhood are between 8,000 and 9,000 square feet. So this is definitely on the large side in terms of lots for Belmont. In the past, staff has allowed more footprint on larger lots, at least on two of my projects. So the original staff comments and what we sort of presented were some percent over 100% footprint options for this property. Joseph replied really quickly via email and the points we took away were minimal connector was a high priority, which we fully understand part of our initial goal and do not paint the brick, which we also would not want to do in a case like this, considering it's original handmade brick on site. But the footprint feedback that we got from staff reads, while a two-story rear addition may be appropriate here since the historic house is full two stories, staff finds that two stories covering this entire large footprint may overwhelm the lot and historic house. With this sized footprint, perhaps some of the addition could be two-story form while some of it is one-story. I know you indicated that may be the case anyway, yesterday, when we discussed some of the footprint being covered, porches and outdoor space, et cetera, not all being fully enclosed massing. If a full two-story form is desired for the entire footprint, staff finds it would be necessary to reduce the size of the footprint. However, this is, of course, based on overall massing, it's difficult to provide definitive feedback to the size of the footprint and height until we see elevations. So that's our takeaway from our initial meetings, that we were headed on the right track. And based on that feedback, we went ahead and put together, and this is sort of unusual things, we put together 3D sort of massing to review because it is, as we discussed, and their points were not all two-story, even though we sort of know what two-story rear additions look like. So we prepared these models and presented them to Joseph and Melissa for review. Their feedback was favorable and we were encouraged to examine the second floor massing on the west side, that being the left side of the house. We initially submitted this in November, but staff had concerns. We made some footprint productions before we resubmitted it in December. So the way I understand it, and we do this often, we've had two of these projects this year on large lots, 100% footprint is allowed. The footprint of this with everything that was there was 1,460 square feet. That times two, doubling 100% is a total footprint of 2,920 square feet. That times two is a 5,840 square foot structure. The current design is only 5,400 square feet. And I know we spent a lot of time talking about the prioritization of this inset and connector, but two-foot insets are what are required throughout the neighborhood for a two-story addition. Interior reconfiguration in this particular project is very limited. We didn't want to come in, hollow it out like a pumpkin and sort of redesign something in its place. And side additions are allowed up to 50% of the facade on all lots over 64 feet in width. So the whole side addition thing, I mean, we've done this many times. The current design, as we listen to staff, created these design challenges. The minimal connector, a high priority and meeting number one. We provided a two-story, all glass, 24-foot wide, eight-foot deep glass connector. That's substantially smaller and lighter and more transparent than you would typically find, but that does create some real issues with integrating existing house into sort of additions. We are preserving all of the original masonry mass and the central chimney stack, which involves minimal demo and build-out of the existing rooms, which frankly also limits integration of program space between old and new. Modest two-story addition, this second floor is only is a third smaller than the footprint. We've aligned the roof with existing. We have lower knee walls and thanks for staff for letting us do these wall dormers in that courtyard for those upstairs bedrooms. And we've limited the side addition to, as we mentioned, 10 feet and then we pushed the second floor back a little bit further than that in an effort to make that less. Basically, we've worked extensively with staff and we felt like we addressed their concerns and thought that this met those requirements. We believe the proposal for 1806 Cedar falls within the acceptable guidelines, given the design constraints requested by staff on a really large lot. We feel the addition would be a modern addition, yet subordinate to the existing house. The bottom line is, we need a larger footprint to be able to create the addition with a minimized connector, limited demolition and a reduced second floor footprint. Overall square footage would be less, would be more if we built a full two-story solution for this property. And as regards to a couple of the other points, staff can explain more about the garage addition. We didn't provide that in our submission. We talked about it earlier. That's their footprint for how it would be positioned. We really want to focus on our house at this point and get to our garage later on.
Anything else?
So anyway, thank y'all for hearing us and I'm here to answer any questions, so I'm sure you'll have a few.
Hi, my name's Tanner Rollins, the current owner of 1806 Cedar. I just wanted to present and say that I was how excited I was about this property that it came up for sale. I've known about this property for probably 15 years and my old friend of mine actually raised his three kids there. So when it came up for sale, it was, it's felt like the right time to pursue this property. I think it's a really unique property in that this thing is 170 years old and I feel the unique privilege with the experience that I have to maintain this structure and the integrity that it has. Actually, I had the opportunity to work on the Cordell Building just down the street here. I got to work closely with some structural engineers with the challenges that it took to preserve the structural integrity of that building, being that it was a true handmade brick facility. So with that, we took all those things into consideration, being that our biggest goal of importance was to maintain structure and integrity within it, trying to really maximize what this thing was and what it was built originally for. And that meant we kind of had to go outside the box in how we would typically design a structure in this area. Yeah, I talked with several of the neighbors around the house as well, just to get their feedback. This hand, this property's only changed hands, you know, very few times and I wanted to make sure that their voices were heard if they had any concerns, but I have full support of two neighbors directly across the street and behind us, as well as several others in the, on the street of Cedar. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Four seconds left. All right. Open public hearing.
My name's Keith. I'm here at 1808 Cedar Lane. My parents or my mom has owned that property, which I think you've gone by and spoken to her before since 1969. So she's been in there, she's 88 years old, she's owned it. Sorry to the council person for going back even further than the 80s, but she's owned the property since 1969. And a couple of questions, and we're not opposed to anything that you've submitted, but we have some some questions that I guess this would maybe an appropriate forum. Growing up as a child, the rumor was that there was a tunnel that ran underneath our house to that house because it had something to do with the Civil War and a hospital. And I don't know if your survey showed or identified anything like that. That was a rumor that we, and we would always find bricks and we'd say, oh, maybe it's from the Civil War. But one of my mom's main questions is blasting. Will there be any blasting, significant blasting, and how would, how would that be minimized to affect the property? Because these are large lots and we own lots 76 and 77 on the corner, which is adjacent to 1806. So those are some of the questions that we have and I'm not sure if this is the proper forum or if it's just a conversation that we have, but that's her primary concern and and exactly how the height of the new building, because this is going to be a significant change to what I guess, I hate to say it, but what she's used to, but she does, she is all for progress as well. So those are some of the questions that we have and if this isn't forum, I'll address it elsewhere, elsewhere, but that's primarily what I wanted to address the board. I appreciate your time. Look forward to talking to you guys.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, just to confirm that there will be no blasting of any kind. It's not not our typical construction process. And in terms of the height, we're obviously within the guidelines of just sticking and maintaining with the existing structure. You know, it was, it was really interesting talking with your mom when I stopped by and she was very excited to see some of the trees come down and I think the neighbors were really excited to see some progress as well as we were, so yeah.
Thank you. More?
Yeah, and as Tanner mentioned, we are in line with the roof because if we went taller, we couldn't be wider. So you get a choice, you're wider or taller, and we opted for that width as opposed to that verticality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from public hearing? All right, closed public hearing. Question for Jenny. Right? Jenny, this was your project. Or was, oh, it was Joseph. Sorry. The context around this house, I'm looking at page two of the recommendation, there are historic buildings adjacent, correct?
There are historic buildings, yes, in the vicinity here. Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure we had some context of that. This might be just another pictorial question on page three. So maybe that's the backside. So that little side addition, if you're facing the front, that was original to the house? On the far, yeah, on the right, facing the house?
The portion on the far right, is that?
Right.
So let me go back to the sandboard here. So in the the very first sandboard we have, it's actually not there. That's on the left. I think that's the 1914 sandboard. Then on the right, it's been added. You can see it there and I think that's 1930. So yeah, it wasn't original, but it is very old.
It wasn't original, but?
But it is very old, but it wasn't original.
Gotcha. So the one on the right is the more current?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
And they are proposing demolishing that that little portion on the end and reconstructing it basically in the same footprint and exactly the same. I think it's just maybe deteriorated and needs to be reconstructed.
Right. I think that was my leaning to that.
Yes.
Okay.
So Joseph, I have a question too, I'm sorry. So the concern from staff then is the, not the right addition, but the fact that you can see the addition to the left of the main building.
Yeah, so the concern of staff's is mainly just the overall size of the the addition as a whole compared to the original historic house. And but we did kind of zone in in our in our staff recommendation on that portion that's going wider. If we're looking for a portion that could maybe be reduced in footprint, the portion that goes wider made the most sense to staff when we were reviewing it, just given that part of it's two stories, part of it has a flat roof, it kind of doesn't fit with the character of the historic house. And so we did recommend in the staff recommendation that maybe that's the place to begin reducing the footprint is that portion that goes wider. But the guidelines do allow for something that goes wider here if it meets the overall massing and scale and all the other guidelines.
Okay, so to follow that up, then there is a concern with the 5,400 square feet size of the?
Correct. That that was the first, the first concern staff had was the overall size. And then we were just looking how how the footprint could be reduced.
Joseph, just because we do have some new commissioners and we're all learning to to have this discussion, just refresh us in terms of when there's an original historic house, what is the maximum usually that we would approve?
We typically say that it shouldn't more than double the footprint of the historic house. There's sometimes some exceptions for that, but it usually goes before the commission in those cases, if it's going to be larger than double.
And this is beyond the double?
This is beyond the double.
Yeah.
I will also point out, if I do have conditions, if it were to go towards approval, I have some conditions that I would like to add before it goes that way.
Sure. Does the commission want to hear that now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
Some conditions to add, some of these are just standard conditions, but a couple of other things to point out. Number one, the final material selections for foundation, cladding, roofing, trim, porch elements, windows, doors and site elements are reviewed and approved prior to purchase and installation. The proposed front yard parking, let me go to see the site plan here, the proposed front yard parking pad be removed from the project. So there's a little front yard parking pad condition there towards the right. Typically, don't allow front yard parking pads here. So if that be removed, the HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side, be on the midpoint of the house and utility meters be located on the side of the building. A partial demo and shoring plan be reviewed prior to permitting and partial demolition be accomplished manually and not begin until a partial demo and shoring plan has been approved and the building has been shored. So we would want to take special care to make sure that the building is shored properly.
Did I just hear you right? You said shoring, proper shoring?
Yes, proper shoring.
Very good. We're very in tune with that.
Yes.
So Joseph, for the front yard parking, how do you count the front yard? Is that in the plane of the front of the building or does it extend further back?
I think typically here, we don't allow side additions to kind of come out and cause a front yard parking situation and because, and the driveway does extend all the way to the rear here, so they would still be able to access the rear of the yard, but we, because it's such a narrow, a shallow house here, I think this would be considered front yard parking because it's forward, well, part of it is actually forward of the house and, but it's certainly right there towards the front.
To put a pin in that one. So if you take all the advantages of the original house and you put them in a project, I mean, the front yard, yes, it doesn't extend beyond the the front added.
in the front yard, yes, it doesn't extend beyond the, the front added, well, the historically present but now added front porch, and the justification for that, I think in a purely technical interpretation of this, that would be side yard parking, but I think in terms of the global, there's a lot of house there, and surely the parking could be accommodated behind the fence.
This is a unique property for sure, and if it is one of the oldest ones in the neighborhood, that even makes it more unique as well. I don't think I've seen a house this, quite this seasoned.
I am really struggling with this one because of the original, you know, age of this house, and I think this is a great plan, not altering, you know, original house, and especially with this much history. And, but at the same time, you know, you, I think this is not like a gigantic house because of the footprint, kind of modest house in the today's, you know, consideration. So it is the only way to preserve the original, you know, historic portion of the house, or is there any other way? But I think applicant made it clear, if we want not to, they want not to expand to the side, they have to go taller. So probably they can do like a smaller footprint, but it would be much taller. So would that be appropriate? Or, you know, if this design as is, is more appropriate? But at the same time, I think this is a great, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is a great expansion, because, you know, original footprint, including the rear portion, so let's say original footprint is fourteen hundred square foot, but proposal is, I think, as calculated, twenty-five, so that's a quite expansion. So that's why I'm really struggling. Is there any other way to preserve this wonderful historical structure without adding that much footprint? But, so, yeah, it's, it's a struggle for me, this one.
I also recall that Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood, their concerns a few years ago was that things were getting bigger and bigger, and less more compliant. I mean, when I say compliant, it's more to, you know, again, the massing and scaling to compare to our historic structure in, in the neighborhood. So it, just putting that out, that, again, it's to be sensitive to how, first of all, how it symbiotic to, to the historical structure and its history, and yet have it contemporary to the time.
This is in, in, in the weeds a bit, but I think one of the, there was a specific comment about the wider portion having a flat roof, and so it, one has a flat roof, which contrasts it from the historic house. I think as an architectural move, makes sense. It certainly sets, it gives the opportunity for the historic home, it's not competing with it, and so I, that makes architectural sense to me, and, and I think as, as a way to solve this, I can, I can respect that, and, and I, I don't feel like the flat roof on its own misses, misses the mark in terms of meeting the guidelines by having that contrast. Then you add to it that the base comes up to the sill of the window, which is, again, sort of in the same vein, it's contrasting with the front of the house not to equivocate between the two, using ten dollar, you know, ten dollar words here, but again, there's another, another move architecturally to make it separate and apart from, and I'm in the composition, I'm, I'm curious if all of those things together sort of push it to be contemporary. I know the staff was certainly looking at that, that each one of these things individually, does the, the composition as a whole for what really can be seen, looking at the front and from the front elevation and, and obliquely, do those things all together become? Each individually could be, you know, you could find a place in the guidelines where they, they don't necessarily true up, and, and then together, is it, is it go beyond something? Because I think we've approved individually these items before, in, in a case where it was very intentional and it wasn't just haphazardly allowed to happen, or, well, we, we, we made it, we made the brick come up, you know, halfway because we thought it would look fun. It, it certainly is not that. And I'm curious what other commissioners have about those specific things in the three-dimensional view.
I've looked at that as well. You know, the, one of the things I do like about this proposal is that, for the most part, except for that part on the left, it is fully contained behind the house, and because it's a two-story original structure, it does mask that, that addition that you're doing on the back. And it is a little large addition, I, I mean, there's no doubt about that. I, I think as far as the addition that you can see from the front that's on the left-hand side, I, I agree that, I think keeping it as part of that as a one-story, keeping it lower, subservient is good. One of the things that the guidelines do say is that the height of the foundation wall, porch roofs and main roofs of a new building shall be compatible but not contrasting greatly with the historic building. The one thing that I do think is that raising the foundation wall up tends to give more prominence to that, and I'd rather see less prominence on that structure and let it fade back in the back, which is, it is, you know, more than the distance, the depth of the building back behind the house. So I would think lowering that foundation wall would bring us more in compliance with what the guidelines call for. I think the other, that was it right back there. The next one back, the rendering, it shows pretty well in the rendering.
There you go, that's it, yep, that's it. I appreciate the comments, because it's, it's a very intentional architectural move, and, and again, all those things together is, is one, is one step too far.
Any other comments? Commissioner? Again, thank you, the architect. We know how hard you work on these things. You do bring us good projects that follow guidelines, and we know you really worked hard on this one. We are on the fence about the massing and scaling. Massing. We, unless the commission would like to hear that from you. Would you like to hear the applicant respond to that, or would it even help our discussion? We, we've closed public hearing, so I think we have two really great architects on, on our board, and they are looking at it carefully. You know, again, architecturally, it is a great design, in terms of trying to balance that historical and the contemporary, and yet, we do have.
I think personally, you know, this design, because the original house is such a historical structure, and having contemporarily, you know, appropriate height and flat roof, I think it's contrast, and I think it's rather complement with this original house. So for that, I don't mind, you know, this design, even though it may be a little outside of the design guideline, but in this instant, I think it really complement this house. So I think what I'm struggling is, one, we never, as far as I'm, since I'm on the board, never approved the house, you know, expanding that much footprint. But at the same time, we never approved the house with that much deep history. So if this, because of the unique property, it can be, go a little bit outside of the guideline. If, you know, the commissioner agree with that, I, I think this plan with specific history and location, really considerate designed for preservation of original building, as a whole, I can see this will fit with that, you know, location.
Commissioner, if we do lean to that, we really should list down why, less, you know?
Yes, so, I mean, because of the uniqueness of this history, deep history, and original, you know, I mean, one hundred seventy years old building, how often we can save that? And to incorporate today's living, and then try to make up with, incorporate in today's, you know, timeline. So that's what I'm leaning towards, but other commissioner may have a different opinion as well.
How you measure is always important in lots of ways. And I, I think the applicant certainly gave one methodology for, for measuring and, and sort of the guidance, and let's call it that, because there's not a guideline that says it's either this or it's, you know, they're, they're not that, they don't box this in in, in that way. So I, I think that, well, we want to be respectful of how we've done it, and certainly, all applicants, not all, but many applicants are looking for guidance because architects cost money, you know, time, they, they, they want to move these projects along, and so there are, we, we provide that as, as, as a means of getting from here to there. The staff certainly has taken a different opinion of how you measure that, so for me, the numbers, while important, are a starting place to talk about, is there too much house on the lot?
Right.
And I think the applicant, again, has presented that, you know, it's a twelve thousand square foot lot, it's sort of keystone shaped, so it, it's large, it's wider in the front and, and decreases not tremendously, it's not, by no means it's a pie-shaped lot, but, but it is a rather large lot. And so will this house fit comfortably on this lot, given the massing and proportion? I, I think that's what we stick to. If, if we find that that's appropriate, well, then it's appropriate by the guidelines and we need to so-state. If it's not, then we need to have an opinion about that, and they can work to get it. In, in, and so-state why, why you feel like it's not. I, I think sticking hard to the numbers is not something I'm going to get twisted around the axle about necessarily. It certainly is a good place to start. But I, I wanted to point that out to help us move it along.
I also, I agree, I agree with both of you in, in terms of the logic. I also want to be sensitive to that if we are brought in another project of this nature, of course, we, we review site-specific, we know, it's not across the board, but, you know, having our guidelines to say it's doubled, you know, this is tripled, then will some, will some applicant come before us and go, will you approve that? And it's three times this, but here's what you've, you know, you've decided this in the past. I think, I don't want us to get caught in that kind of debate, where we have made, we like the design, we have to be sure when we say we like it, we need to back it up.
Liking it's got nothing to do with it.
That's right. And we do like it, but we have to back it up. And again, you know, setting precedence is always one of our comments, and I just want to be sensitive to that and be sure the commission is very clear. Could you just remind me of the facts here? How big is the current structure? How many square feet? Without those additions they took off?
So the existing residence, just that front two-story brick portion, is eight hundred and thirty-four square feet. And then there's six hundred and twenty-six square feet of additions that there, that have already been removed, that, that are, that are old, but they're not the original footprint.
Right. So that's fourteen hundred square feet. And the addition that they're proposing is how many square feet?
So, let's see, the, the total new addition, not counting, let's see, the total new addition is two thousand five hundred and forty-six square feet. I'm reading all my notes here, but yeah, two thousand five hundred and forty-six, all of the pieces of the new addition added.
So it's about twice the size, right, of the current structure and the part they took off?
Correct. And, and if you-
We clarify to say it's twice the footprint, size and footprint are not the same.
Size and footprint.
Lot coverage, or if you draw a line around the plan, it covers this much area. Size, to me, is measured in length, width, height. I, I mean, in terms of what we're, what we're here for and talking about.
Okay, I got you. I got you, okay. Okay, how about if we just, somebody make a motion, let's see how this pans out. Nobody wants to make a motion. Give it a try.
So just for the interest to carry on our meeting forward, I will make motion to approve the plan as presented with additional conditions stated by our staff.
There's a motion, is there a second? There is no second, so that motion fails? Legal, is that correct? Okay. All right, let's try it again. I think we're headed there, we've heard conversations, so I, I'm gonna, gonna trust that we have an architect applicant that will continue to work. So I think you've heard our discussions, so.
Before we move on, I, I mean, I, I think we talked, or we do, we do need to provide some guidance to, to this applicant, and we've, we've heard this case and, and turned it over a time or two. I'm, I'll kind of restate my position. I feel like that in looking at the massing, taking into account the respect that's been shown in the two-story nature of, of this existing and historic, going way back in the history of this house, that and the preservation of that is to be commended in this. And I do feel like that the massing and scale of the additions are appropriate for this size lot and, in this district. I do have some concern, and I feel like that the one-story, flat-roofed addition, all the combination of components there that, there's a specific guideline that it's contrasting greatly with on, on the treatment of the, of the foundation is, is, I'm not compelled by the design that that would, would be something to overlook. In, but the massing and its lot coverage, or however you want to measure, I don't find to be outside the guidelines in, in my, looking at the total picture.
Okay.
Being specifically about that, because I think the staff has commented on, there's a flat roof, you've got the other piece, you know, going through the, each of those items, if, if you have particular feeling about those one way or the other, it'd be great for the commission to hear that, so we can come to a conclusion and, and make a motion and have it moved through the course of things.
So should I read the recommendation? Just for clarity again, so I know we've, you know, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed addition, finding that the proposal does not meet sections as listed on the recommendation. So we've done this before, we've voted on these kind of difficulties, so let's do it.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that we vote in favor of staff recommendations for eighteen oh-six Cedar Lane. that, um, we vote in favor of staff recommendations for eighteen oh six Cedar Lane.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a second? We have a second. Commissioner Williams? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. There's two. And who's opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay, so that passes. Oh, it's, it's two, oh, got it. Oh, there's two noes. Wait, there's two noes and there's one, two, three, four, four noes.
So the motion.
Four noes, two yeses. Okay, so what does that mean again?
Somebody has put forth another motion, it, it fails.
Okay.
Let's move on. So with respect to eighteen oh six Cedar Lane, finding from the applicant's submission and the discussion here today, I've, um, moved approval for the submission with the following conditions, that, um, partial demolition plan and shoring, proper shoring plan be reviewed and approved by the staff. The, um, parking that is in the front slash side yard be, um, relocated to somewhere that, um, staff finds appropriate, that the, all the material selections be, um, reviewed and approved by the staff as was previously stated by the presenting staff member, and that, uh, the mechanicals and such be reviewed as, as we normally would. Also, that the foundation, um, line or the foundation material on the one-story addition that extends beyond the width of the house be amended to, um, comply with the guidelines. And, um, that was it for me in terms of, of making a motion. I know that was rambling, but trying to land the plane there.
There's a first and there's a second by the vice chair. All in favor of that motion? Oh.
I think, uh, our staff has additional regular condition if we want to approve. So I would like to make it clear, a condition from the staff.
Say it again, okay, repeat.
Thank you, I just wanted to, I, I don't know if you, you might have mentioned that, uh, the partial demo and shoring plan and that partial demolition be accomplished manually, those two conditions.
Manually.
So, um, I will amend the, to include the manual, um, partial demolition be included in that motion.
Yes, sir. And the vice chair seconds the amendment? All in favor? Okay. Any opposed? Okay, that motion does carry, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, applicant. Um, it is, um, four thirty, can we take, we take a little break? Okay, let's take a tan. Thank you. We're good IT, right?
Okay, all right, ready to go? All right, the next application is for three twenty-two Broadway. So the building located at three twenty-two Broadway was constructed circa eighteen sixty and it does contribute to the historic character of the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The application is to install a projecting sign on the Fourth Avenue North elevation. Uh, as proposed, the sign meets all design guidelines with the exception of location. So the proposed projecting sign is located on the Fourth Avenue North facade on the brick column at the corner in front of the storefront on that side. Uh, the sign has a clearance of thirteen feet above the sidewalk, which puts the sign at the same height as the storefront cornice. Uh, in the proposed location, staff finds that the projecting sign will obscure the architectural features of the storefront uh, as continued onto the Fourth Avenue North elevation. So while projecting signs have been approved, um, at the corner of buildings in the overlay, um, projecting signs are typically located above the storefront, uh, which is seen on the other two projecting signs on this building. Uh, so for these reasons, staff recommends that the proposed projecting sign be located farther away from the corner beyond where the storefront windows are located, um, on Fourth Avenue North, and that the sign be moved up so that it's located above the storefront. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed projecting sign with the condition that the sign be located above the storefront cornice uh, and north of the storefront windows on the Fourth Avenue North side so as to not obscure the architectural features. Uh, and with this condition, staff finds that the sign can meet all of the design guidelines for the Broadway, uh, district.
Thank you, Melissa. Applicant? Again, thank you for waiting, for traveling to Nashville.
Sherri Young, eight eight five four, Bray-Hawke Point, Orlando. Um, we are just recommending and requesting that we keep the sign in the same location, but move it above the cornice. We've been on Lower Broadway for about thirteen years now and plan to be there for much longer. We did a renovation on the second floor of Margaritaville and really transformed the space into a great sports lounge. We have over eighty LED screens. This room can be trans, you know, can be transformed into anything other than just a sports lounge as well. Unfortunately, a second-floor location in an existing building uh, with a smaller sign, it's only a six-foot sign, it's hard to get visibility there. So we're requesting, instead of moving that sign back, that we're allowed to keep it in its current location that we've proposed, but move it above that cornice as well so that we get good visibility on it. Any questions?
Not yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay. Commissioners?
I want to, um, can, can the staff restate? If the, if the sign is moved, located at the corner and moved above the cornice so it no longer obscures the detail, is there something in the guidelines that prohibits its location? I mean, it's technically on Fourth Avenue and they may have utilized their allotment on Broadway. And I get all the things at play and at work here. So I'm, I'm curious to hear what the objection would be with that amended location as requested by the applicant today.
Uh, so the, the design guidelines, it, with regard to location specifically, states that the location should not obscure architectural features. Upon looking at this, staff found that locating the sign above the first floor, um, which is typically seen for projecting signs, and, and locating it a bit farther back would, would be most appropriate in this case.
It's kind of hard to see in this photograph, but there's a detailing on that corner of, of brick. Um, I don't know if anyone can get on Google, but you can see it there, that continues up those upper levels. So we're trying to get it off of that feature.
Is that the same detail that you can see in the second column?
In the second what, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so there, there's a series of pilasters, um, that move down the building and, and there's, the pilaster kind of comes out and then the brick recesses in the middle. Is that detail consistent to the corner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
And there is a projecting sign that is located not at a pilaster, but at the, the next sign back that I can see in that image is located not at the pilaster, but just sort of in the field of brick next to the window.
Correct.
Would that be appropriate for the, I mean, I'm not advocating for the applicant, but I'm, I'm having a hard time without a guideline to say you can't put it there. If she gets it above the cornice and it's not on that detail, is, let's, let's not kid ourselves here. She want, the most visibility for the sign is as close to Broadway as you can get it, right? And if you can't, i- if, if we can't say this is an appropriate location, that's the only thing I'm struggling with, otherwise, hey, it's good.
The allotments are good?
Right. And it, it's not projecting too far off the building and, and, and all those things. If it doesn't obscure the details, then moving it back beyond, if she's above the cornice and not on the column, is that sufficient?
Yes, I, I, if you think, if you feel it's a sufficient, it'll be.
Those, those are the things that make it, that, that are problematic with as proposed where it was located. Okay.
I just pulled it up on Google Earth and it looks like the, the sign that he's, that Commissioner Mosley is referring to is maybe a foot or so off of that column. And it seems like that would be appropriate for this location, so. It still keeps it close to Broadway and pretty visible.
This one?
Mm-hmm. See, there's the, there's the column that repeats it every. And there's the column we're talking about there.
And it's an architectural feature. It's definitely clearer on Google.
Yeah.
So in that case, uh, just I will give it a try to make motion. I make motion to approve three twenty-two Broadway signage uh, away from the cornice, above the, uh, cornice and away from decorative, uh, brick in the corner. Uh, with that location, uh, we approve, uh, the signage.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you so much. Safe travel.
All right, uh, this next case, uh, is an application for an addition to a historic house in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The address is fifteen oh nine Dallas Avenue. And that's a photo of the front, uh, the left oblique and then the right side. Uh, as I said, it's an application to construct a rear addition behind the one-story house. Uh, the addition attaches at the rear and goes rider, wider to the right side. Uh, the footprint does not more than double the area of the house's footprint. The footprint, as I said, is wider to the right, but it is not taller than the house. Uh, and it has a one and a half-story form uh, with matching foundation height and eve height and slightly lower roof height uh, that staff finds to be, uh, compatible with the historic house and consistent with the surrounding historic context. The materials will be cement fiber siding, asphalt shingle roof, metal porch roof and split face block foundation. Uh, the materials are also compatible with the house. Uh, as a recommend, staff recommend, recommends as a condition of approval, uh, that staff approve the window and door selections along with the roof colors. Uh, the roof of the addition is essentially a cross gable uh, with its main side gable at the rear connecting into the back of the hipped roof of the original house by a perpendicular ridge uh, with side planes stepped in from the side planes of the hipped roof. Uh, the form is compatible overall and preserves the integrity of the original roof. However, there are to be dormers in the, uh, in the valleys where the side gable and the perpendicular ridge meet. Staff finds that the location of these dormers in the valleys where the two roof slopes intersect is not typical of the location of dormers historically. Uh, staff recommends as a condition of approval that these dormers be revised or relocated, uh, perhaps fitting on the side-facing slopes only, rather than in the valley. Uh, here is the right side and that shows the same dormer condition on the right elevation. There will also be dormers on the rear of the rope, rear of the side gable component, uh, which are stepped in two feet from the sides. Uh, and staff finds that these dormer configurations are compat, are appropriate, uh, as they face the rear. Staff recommends approval of the proposed addition to fifteen oh nine Dallas Avenue with the following conditions, that a partial demo and shoring plan are reviewed prior to permitting, that the partial demolition is accomplished manually and not begun until the demo and shoring plan have been, uh, accepted. Uh, HVAC and utility locations are approved by staff, window and door, uh, selections and roof colors to be approved, and that the dormers on the valleys of the side-gabled and cross-gabled connections uh, be revised, uh, to fit, uh, on a side ga, on the side-facing slope only. And with those conditions, staff finds that this addition meets the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions? Okay, not for the moment. Applicant?
Uh, the applicant's here, I can pull up your presentation if you'd like.
Can I manipulate it with this?
Yeah.
I can get started. My name is Blaine Bonadis, I live at sixteen oh six Linden Avenue. Uh, my office happens to be down the street from this beautiful house. Um, I want to make everyone understand from the get-go that the typical lot size in this district, depth-wise, is a hundred and fifty feet. This lot is a hundred and thirty feet deep, so it is, um, much shorter, at least twenty feet or so than what's typical. What we're trying to do is do a rear addition to this house. In order to accomplish that, we've got to get beyond the roof form of the existing house. And that roof form is extremely difficult because it's a hipped roof. You can't just sort of tie onto it. And, uh, staff asked us to sort of leave the outline of the original, not only the original form, but the original addition that was back there. So what, what is forcing us to do is create an addition that is much sort of further back, particularly upstairs. When we get upstairs, further back than we would like to. Our original proposal, which you can see in the top left-hand corner, had a dormer that kind of, um, you know, en- engaged more on that existing hipped roof. The second version was, uh, in your upper right-hand corner, where we created volume on that upstairs, um, with a dormer that turned the corner. We, we've been having conversations with, um, staff since July. Um, these have been, you know, in a compromised effort each time, um, to make the upstairs work. So what you're not seeing here is, um, the effect that it's having in the space planning upstairs. Um, so we finally, uh, felt like we compromised enough with this bottom version, which we have a dormer, that we can grab some light on the ups, in the, in the upstairs as well as some egress from a bedroom. In that compromise, we got rid of windows, we took bathrooms, we stuck them interior with no, um, with, with no light whatsoever, no window. And so we felt like we sort of got to this, to this very last pass where we just didn't understand why we had to make that dormer smaller. Um, we feel like it's visually, um, not too obtrusive. Um, if we go to, uh, the upstairs, that was, um, that is what we previously have. And I mean, we have it labeled Bedroom Three, but you can see that as a twin bed. So, uh, you know, in terms of marketing, we'd call that a bedroom, but in actuality, it's maybe at best an office. Um, and so we're, what we're trying to do is get those windows in Bedroom Three and in the flex room with those dormers. And if we truncate those and get them out of that valley, this is what we end up with. And we completely obliterate, you know, the square footage and the opportunity of space plan of that, that upstairs. Um, we did, uh, do two quick perspectives of what you would see from the street, uh, which I don't find any objection to personally. Um, so I'm not sure why there's, uh, an objection to that. Um, we went to all the neighbors and got signatures in favor of. Um, these are the people that are going to be looking at this, uh, day in and day out. Um, and so we are pretty much at a loss why there's an objection to these dormers. We have, I guess, six minutes left and I wanted to let the homeowner speak quickly.
Uh, yahai, good, good afternoon and, and thanks for your, the, the commission's indulgence. My name is Robert Beck. And, um, I just wanted to let you all know that, um, my family has owned this property, uh, since I believe nineteen ninety. that my family has owned this property since, I believe, 1990. And we had the opportunity to purchase it from them on a... Of course, it doesn't really matter, but it was a 1031 tax-free exchange with my mom and dad, and it was two years ago this month. So the point being is I've spent various, a few years overseas, and I was exposed to this type of, back in the eighties, I believe, is... And I understand Nashville has changed, but to walkable neighborhoods. And I'm just so excited about how Nashville is evolving. And currently, we live in Hermitage, and it's a big suburb. It's almost to the Wilson County line. And my wife is originally a Brazilian national that I met in Manhattan. And I drug my wife down here via, like, if some of you remember Green Acres, like Lisa Douglas was dragged to the farm. She thought she was being dragged down to the farm from Manhattan to Nashville in 1994. But as you can see, it's changed. And this, she's been so excited about this project. I can't begin to tell you. She has an artistic mind in anyways. She's a psychologist at Vanderbilt Psychiatric. And she's been so excited about potentially walking this neighborhood and being a part of it. And basically, I'm saying that to say that we really like a consideration for, you know, acceptance and variance on these dormers. I hope, you know, perhaps I should have taken pictures, but I don't think it's completely out of place for the neighborhood. So again, thank you all for your consideration, and I hope you'll take that in under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Okay.
Something you didn't mention, and that is, they also have an adult son that lives at home. So that upstairs is critical in terms of creating a space that's for an adult that needs to have some independent living skills acquired. And so they are moving into town. We absolutely need that square footage upstairs, and we are trying desperately to preserve whatever is left in that backyard to fence in for even, you know, an animal to roam free for at least 20 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You would still have two minutes for rebuttal if there is any. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Okay. Commissioners? Staff, where exactly is there, in our design guidelines, can you point us to the dormer issue? Would be helpful. Mm-hmm.
It's not a specific language about guidelines, about dormers in particular. It says, "The roofs of..." It's section 2B1E. "The roofs of new buildings, which also pertains to additions, shall be visually compatible by not contrasting greatly with the shape, orientation, and pitch of surrounding historic buildings." And that was what staff... So with that guideline in mind, staff takes a look at the historic buildings and the surrounding context. And to be visually compatible, we look for dormer size, pitch, location. And typically, perhaps without exclusion, we see them located within, on a primary roof slope, so they're not on secondary roof slopes, and they are confined to a single roof slope.
Thank you. Any other clarifications? Okay.
So having been in this plan and resulting roofline exercise many times before, I'm compelled by the applicant's argument. But I also certainly see this from the perspective of staff is that we see quite often roof forms that, you know, it's this amalgamation of things to maximize footprints that where roof forms crash into each other with, a lot of times, with poor results in the end. All that said, I'm saying I'm on the fence. It's not a defensible position, because that's what we have to do here, is we have to decide, is that... But I'm struggling with those two things, because I think the applicant has... It's a modest addition compared to many of the things that we see. It's respectful of the things that we like to see. And so I think I tend to be compelled by the argument, but yet I don't want to provide ammunition for the next, "Well, you let..." "They did it." And, you know, the roof shape's overly complex and not this, as I see it, and as has been presented, not this straightforward. So those are, I think I've restated the same thing in two different ways, but that's sort of where I'm coming down on it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I, too, like Commissioner Mosley, understand as an architect the difficulty of an addition on a structure like this, and appreciate the applicant's visuals that helped, I think, everybody on the commission understand what the conditions were and what the situation were. I, too, find it a difficult line to toe. I do know that, you know, in our guidelines, there are several places where it says the addition should be toward the rear of the property and should, you know, have its bulk back there. And I think this certainly does that. I think it does respect the original home. The hip roof does create challenges that are very significant. But I'd be interested in hearing what other commissioners have to think about having a dormer that goes in between two hips or two roof slopes that come together.
I, too, am persuaded by applicant. I think our guideline specifically did not prohibit those dormer to be in the valley. If there's such a language, I will be persuaded to side with staff. But, you know, original house, the roof line is like a hip roof line. And then, so considering this particular location, like a modest dormer addition is not go against the design guideline. So I am persuaded by applicant's required request.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I concur with the commissioner's comments. This thoughtful design looks appropriate to me. And so it's my view.
It's a beautiful older home. I appreciate the effort to preserve it.
Might I make a request? This is something we see a lot, and we'll see again. And so may I recommend that maybe this is approved based on size of the lot, modest size of the addition, anything else you can think of?
Or I would...
I was headed there.
Do our back up. Let's do our back up.
I was compelled by the applicant's presentation, but I'm still wrestling with how we have dealt with dormers in the past. I've only, I've been on here now for, what, three, four years? And usually, we don't have much give when it comes to dormers. That said, though, hearing the applicant's presentation, I would be in favor of supporting this in this instance.
So if I'm reading the plans correctly, it looks to me like these dormers are fully contained within the addition and do not extend onto the roof of the existing house. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Both sides.
That could be one of our points.
I'll give it a run. So with respect to 1509 Dallas Avenue, finding that the applicant has made significant effort to preserve an existing more difficult roof form of a hip roof and provided a modest addition in total on a smaller lot than average in the neighborhood, find that the dormers that intersect with cross-gable roof form in this case are appropriate, given that the other alternatives would result in more lot coverage and perhaps a larger addition.
You want to put in something about it being totally on the addition and not extending onto the...
And to add, that the dormers are also modest in size, contain window openings, appropriate window openings, and that they are wholly contained within the addition. Move approval with that commentary and all of the staff's recommendations, with the exception of item number five.
That is received as a motion. There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on. So 1002, along with 1,000 and 1,004 Halcyon Avenue, were the location of the second Missionary Baptist Church until recently. The church building was originally constructed between 1955 and 1957 as a one-story brick structure for a Masonic Lodge. Circa 1991, the structure was expanded, adding the roof addition and a rear addition. Due to the structure's date of construction, design, and materials, it does not contribute to the historic character of the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. In September of this year, staff issued an administrative permit for the demolition of the structure. The owner of the property will reestablish the existing lot lines in order to construct three new infill houses at 1,000, 1,002, and 1,004 Halcyon Avenue. The commission approved the infill at 1,004 Halcyon last month. 1,000 and 1,002 Halcyon, as well as 1,001 Montrose Avenue, which served as parking for the church, are on the agenda for this month. So here is the infill that the commission approved at 1,004 Halcyon last month. And now we're looking at the proposed infill for 1,002 Halcyon. So here's the proposed site plan. The project meets all base zoning setbacks. The front setback is in keeping with that of the infill approved next door. Here is the front facade. The infill is one-and-a-half stories with height and scale that are appropriate for the historic context. Here are the side elevations. Overall, staff finds that the proposed height, scale, materials, roof form, finestration pattern, and orientation meet the historic context and the design guidelines. Here are some context photos. The top photo is the site and the historic house at 1,006 Halcyon. The bottom are houses across the street. Here's some additional context photos. And lastly, here's the infill development that was approved across the street in, I believe, 2020 or 2021. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation, which are all standard conditions for infill. The applicant is here.
Thank you, Melissa.
I'm Michael Ward, Alaward Architects, 1702 Linden Avenue. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa Baldock, who's not here, who helped us with all this. We're excited to work with Maker on all these sort of new houses. It's a rare opportunity to design this many houses on a street together. So we've just been doing it one at a time, working our way sort of down the street, sort of defining our context as we go, and frankly, trying to create some variety. I mean, our context is limited, but, you know, how can we create variety? And with one builder and all sorts of aspects, how we can mix up and play with windows and textures and things to sort of get that. So if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you. Any questions to the applicant? Okay. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing?
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1002 Halcyon Avenue as it meets all the guidelines, I recommend approval with staff conditions.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, that motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Now we'll look at the site to the east, 1,000 Halcyon, which is at the corner of 10th Avenue South and Halcyon. So here's the site plan. The applicant proposes the infill as well as an outbuilding. This lot is narrower than the others. It's 44 feet wide at the street, and it narrows to approximately 40 feet at the alley. The infill and outbuilding require setback determinations. The base zoning requires a 20-foot setback from 10th Avenue South, which is a collector. But the applicant is requesting a 10-foot setback for both the garage and the house. Staff finds that the proposed 10-foot side setback meets the historic context. The historic house across the street at 1,001 Halcyon, it's located approximately 10 feet from the side street. In addition, a larger setback would result in a narrower house that would not meet the historic context for width. The proposed front setback is in keeping with the context of 1,002 and 1,004, as well as the historic house at 1,006 Halcyon. Here's the proposed front facade. That's one-and-a-half stories, 26, 6 tall from foundation, which meets the context. The proposed width is 27 feet 8 inches. This is narrower than the historic context, where houses are largely 30 to 38 feet wide. Staff finds the width to be appropriate, given the width of this lot. So the narrower house allows for a more appropriate side setback along 10th Avenue South. Here are the side elevations. Staff finds that the infill's height, scale, reform, setbacks, window pattern, and overall design meet the context and the guidelines. So, and here are in total the three infill projects planned on the church lot altogether. Here's the design for the detached outbuilding. It meets all the guidelines for outbuildings. And staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Note that, so they're all the same standard conditions. There was a condition about showing the front walkway. That's already been met. Staff has received an updated site plan. So with these conditions, I find that it meets the guidelines.
Melissa, with the setback determination, does that not also need to be in the recommendation?
It, I mean, it's in the staff... It is in the staff recommendation that staff recommends approval of the setback determination for both the infill as well as the outbuilding, and it has the reasons for that.
Right.
Yes.
There's no need to specify it specifically anymore than specifying any other part of the project you are approving, assuming you approve. All right. I'm just going to hang here.
Thank you, Melissa. This one was particularly fun because it is so skinny. But I will say that the slide makes it look thinner than it really is. It's not quite that thin.
I do have a quick one, not to lengthen this any further, but the detail when you go up to a flat roof, just to gain some more space in the second story, is that like EPDM and then just sort of bend the shingle over the top of it? I've seen it done really poorly before with like a piece of flashing, and you're like, "What the hell is that?" And I'm curious what that might look like.
I do think the better detail probably does involve flashing, but it is, and we always warn, frankly, when we design it, we try really hard to bookend it between roof forms, because the gables that are on the other sides do not have flashing. And we always tell folks, "You..." And we always tell folks, you're going to potentially have a piece of bronze metal that will span those sections. So we work really hard to box it in. Yes, it's a tapered section up there, but it is frankly with something this small. And you know, and Blaine's presentation was great. These hip roof houses, especially this particular neighborhood, these are really challenging. And the ability to kind of create that little bit of flat section up there is the only way that this house sort of rounds out.
No, that, I think when I saw it, maybe it had like a piece of carbonized or something up there, and I was like, oh yeah, I know what that is.
Yeah. Anyway. Tough detail.
With respect to, whoop, have we closed the public hearing? Sorry.
And that would be you asking me. I think we've opened public hearing, and I think we've closed public hearing, but here we go. All right. Discussion or a motion?
Madam Chair, with respect to 1000 Halcyon Avenue, finding that the application and the presentation here meets the guidelines, move approval with the staff conditions, accepting number two.
Accept.
Or accept item two.
Excluding number two.
Excluding it, that's right.
Could we also do a chair courtesy? Is that I'd like to just clarify that the zoning requires 20 foot, and the applicant is requesting a 10-foot setback, and we're agreeing to that.
So I'm in it.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed or hearing none, we pass that. Thank you.
All right. And so now for 1001 Montrose Avenue, which is at the southwest corner of 10th and Montrose. It's currently a vacant lot that's 75 feet wide and 83 feet wide at the alley. So here's the site plan. The applicant proposes infill that meets the base zoning setbacks with an appropriate front setback that lines up with 1003 Montrose next door. The proposed infill is shifted to the interior of the lot. Staff finds that this meets the historic context because the house directly across Montrose is also shifted in a similar manner. Here are context photos. At the top, there are houses across the street, and at the bottom, the two houses across 10th Avenue South. Here are additional context photos on Montrose. Here's the proposed front elevation. It's again, one and a half stories. Staff finds that the height and scale to be appropriate for the context. And the side elevations, staff finds that as proposed, it meets all of the design guidelines. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation, which are standard for infill projects.
Thank you, Melissa. Applicant?
I'm sorry?
No. Thank you, Melissa. Applicant.
Thank you, Melissa. This is a large lot, so this was a slightly bigger house, so it was a fun one to design. And one shout out on this, every one of these houses were managed by Brittany Mount in my office. These are like her children, but she's having her real baby at the end of January, so she put in a lot of extra effort to get all of these submitted and approved before she goes on maternity leave. So congratulations to her. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Open public hearing? Close public hearing?
Madam Chair? Can I just say, this is my neighborhood, and I think a lot of us in historic neighborhoods around Nashville get a little nervous when we see the old churches sell, and we worry about what will go in there. And I just wanted to thank the staff for their effort in working on these projects. We're thankful for good architects. We're thankful for good developers, and it's great to see the care taken with these projects. So just from a neighborhood perspective.
Very good. Duly noted, sir. Okay. Is there a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, with respect to 1001 Montrose Avenue, seeing that it meets all the guidelines, I move for approval with staff conditions.
Motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none and seeing none opposed, that motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is 1109 Lillian. This is also an application for infill. This existing house is non-contributing and will be demolished. Staff has issued a permit for that demolition. This block has no historic context. The commission has approved several similar infill houses on this block that have been constructed over the past several years. Here's some recent infill on this block. Up above, you can see the subject property on the far left, and then down below, that is the house that is to the left of the subject property. And then the one on the bottom right is across the street. So here are the front and side elevations. The proposed structure is consistent with previous approvals and the immediate context in terms of number of stories, width, height, roof form, orientation, setbacks, parking, and rhythm of openings. There is an open carport proposed for the rear on the first level. Staff finds this to be appropriate in this instance because the lot is very short and only 107 feet deep, and there is no alley here. The commission approved the same attached carport feature for the other infill houses in this immediate vicinity. Here's the rear and the other side elevation. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with the standard conditions seen here. I know the applicant is here. I don't know if he wants to speak, but he's available if you have questions. Questions for me?
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Applicant is okay? All right. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? And a motion? You know, it's really nice to see these modest infills and one and one half stories, so it doesn't give us these crazy.
Make it these first on the agenda so we can build them.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Is there a motion? Would you like to make one? All right. All right.
I'll take a crack.
Okay, you go.
With respect to 1109 Lillian Street, we vote to approve the staff recommendation with the following conditions of one, two, and three.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. That motion? There is a second by, who do you want to catch first, Robin?
She'll never tell.
My chair said by a split second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Do you even want them to rescind the last approval on this? Or just skip it altogether?
Uh.
Do you want to do that now? I guess, yeah. It's not very. Okay.
Did?
We're skipping Utah. They did not meet the notice requirements.
Thank you.
Moving on to an item that was pulled from the consent agenda, and I'm presenting this for Melissa Baldock. She's not here today. She, apparently there was an incident on a child's amusement ride. She's okay. So she's not here today. I mean, I guess she's on vacation going to amusement parks.
We hope you're okay, Melissa.
So 1616, 16th Avenue South is a historic house. It is a circa 1935 bungalow with a combination of craftsmen and Tudor revival detailing. The house is contributing to the South Music Row Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The composition of this overlay is unique in that it was historically a residential neighborhood, but many of the buildings have been used and adapted for, have been adapted for other uses since the 1950s. And the lots on 16th Avenue South are zoned OR 20, which is intended for office, residential, and multifamily use. And broadly, the South Music Row today is a mix of offices, studios, and other uses, in-house building forms, and other variety of building types across a wide range of architectural periods. And notably, the rear yards in this neighborhood are quite often fully paved to serve as parking areas. So that's background, and to accommodate that or to address that, the design guidelines for South Music Row were developed to reflect this unique context and history, and they include specific guidelines, specific language to facilitate adapting residential buildings for commercial purposes. And then in the past, the commission has allowed for designs for additions and infill that might not be appropriate in other districts. So keep that in mind. Here is the site plan for the proposed addition to 1616 16th Avenue South. The applicant is removing a non-contributing addition at the rear. The proposed new addition meets all the base zoning setbacks and is inset three and a half feet from the left side and approximately, or a little over 11 feet on the right side. The addition's footprint is slightly more than double the footprint of the historic house, but only by more than 10 feet more than doubling. Staff finds that the minor increase beyond doubling is appropriate in the South Music Row neighborhood, which has long had commercial uses and where rear yards and rear yard space typically have been converted for parking. Here's the front elevation. It shows up much better on your screens than it does on the projection. The front elevation, the addition extends two feet taller than the historic house, as you see there, peeking out above the left side. The tall screen wall on the right side of the property that you see there, that is something that the Historic Zoning Commission does not review in conservation overlays. It's essentially an appurtenance or an object that is outside of our purview and guidelines. We encourage the applicant to reach out to the codes department to see if that's allowed, but it's not something that we review. That is the left side elevation. The addition, as you see, has a two-story form with a low-sloped roof and contemporary design. Staff finds that this could be appropriate here since the addition is only two feet taller and not wider, and the footprint is roughly equal to that of the historic house as permitted by the guidelines. Additionally, staff notes that this addition, by stepping in, largely preserves the historic house's roof form and does not impact the front or sides. This is the right elevation. The drawings that were submitted showed that there were some alterations proposed for the original window, existing window condition on the historic house. The applicant has submitted revisions showing that the window openings on the house will not be changed. The addition is clad in metal and wood screen. This can be appropriate, given the contemporary nature of the design and compatible with the overlay. Staff recommends final approval of material specifications prior to purchase and installation. That is the rear elevation. This is a perspective of the house with the addition shown from the rear. This is another perspective from above into the front. You can see there, it shows that the historic, the form of the historic house is kept largely intact and unimpacted, and then some additional renderings. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. Condition one being met. Number two, that the Historic Zoning Commission approve the specifications of windows and doors, metal and wood screen specifications, the metal roof color, and all other materials prior to purchase and installation, and that the commissioner's staff approve the location of mechanicals and utilities. And with all those conditions met, those two conditions met, staff finds that this meets the applicable sections of the South Music Row overlay guidelines.
Thank you, Sean. I have a question about the appurtenances. So does that include fencing and that kind, so we do not review?
Not in a conservation zoning overlay. Historic preservation overlays, we do review fences, retaining walls, fountains, other permanent landscape features. In a conservation overlay, those things are outside of our purview.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for clarification.
I believe you've received public comment on that? No, we've not? Okay. But there, I believe, will be public comment.
Okay.
Here now.
All right. So applicant is?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. This is Melissa's case, so I had not met the applicant.
Come on, come on up. Thank you for waiting.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Chris Saunders, Dana's and Chandler Architects. We appreciate all of staff's and their work and recommendations, so, you know, really the design intent for this addition, we really wanted to differentiate the old versus the new, so the design intent behind the addition is to have those contemporary features in contrast with the existing building, and we are preserving the facade. We apologize for the error in the windows on our model, but we have since fixed that. So thank you for your time.
And thank you for your preservation as well. Okay, open public hearing?
Good afternoon.
What?
I'm sorry. Michael Ward with Allard Architects. I'm at 1618 16th Avenue South, and we're excited about the addition next door. I think it'll be a great contribution to the neighborhood. And we've been in conversation ever since this was initially sort of suggested with staff about this 20-foot tall thing that y'all won't review. We're not sure who reviews, but is on our side of the property. I don't know if you can pass these around, but you know, it's fall now, but I have five Natchez, white Natchez crape myrtles, and David Allard and I planted those ourselves in 2006. I'm the one responsible for watering and pruning and everything else for the last 16, what, 17 years? And the other really impressive is a Don Redwood there. This 20-foot wall, if I recall, is how many feet of concrete first, Sean? I frankly have been preoccupied this week with other things, but if you can go back to that detail. And Brian was going to do this, but Brian has COVID, so here I am. So we've got this concrete wall here, and while that might not hurt the, my crape myrtles, that will kill that redwood. And I guess I'm just sort of confused if I've, you know, if we've planted this screen wall, why do we need another 20-foot wall to block us? And it, you know, if I, we spend a lot of time talking about eight-foot and 10-foot fences and whether or not they're appropriate, and I got a 20-foot tall thing between me and them. And I don't mind looking at it, I just don't, I just think it's going to be much more invasive to me in terms of what I've tried to do to keep the neighborhood green, and it's not easy to keep trees in this neighborhood. And 1616 cut all their trees down already this year, so they don't have any. I've got mine, and I really don't want to lose these. I've got too much in it, and they mean a lot to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right.
I mean, if y'all don't review, I don't know where to go.
Yeah. Say it again.
Code codes?
Did you know that we don't review that?
After everything we talked about today, I guess I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
And the height of it, I mean, I couldn't even put a day dude that's 20-foot tall on this property line, but yet you, they can build a 20-foot wall on the property line. And for me to go to codes.
We're not saying they can build a 20-foot wall.
Well, I just wanted y'all to at least make a statement here because I don't, I mean, I can't go to codes and get questions answered on my own buildings. To go down to codes and try to get one answered on somebody else's is going to take more time than this afternoon took, is all I can say.
I recommend using Hub Nashville as a starting point. It's going to mean so much more to them coming from you than they don't care what we have to say.
So I can ask the question, if they say they don't review it, then I'm stuck with it. I guess is what I'm.
They do review it.
But if they would allow it?
I imagine it would have to go to BZA because I don't think it meets code.
Can you talk to the neighbor? Can you talk to the developer?
I guess that's all we'll have to do. But it, I mean, it just, it's a big thing.
It is, and we hear that you're taking it personally, and sure, you know.
What, what is, how are we classifying it? It's not an addition because there's no occupancy to it?
It's a wall.
Is it a fence?
It's a wall.
It's a living wall. But what? What did you say earlier? Was it, it's an appurtenance? Legal term for it.
That's a term the design guidelines use, but codes will call it a wall or a fence. It'll be the same thing, and they'll review it with their regulations, which from what I've read, doesn't allow for more than six feet, but.
Or eight feet.
You know, that's up to them to decide if they're going to interpret differently, or if it should go to BZA, or. or if it should go to BZA, or if it won't be something that you review.
These guidelines are silent on fences and appurtenances.
It's more than that. Neighborhood conservation zoning overlays don't, that's not what you review in a neighborhood conservation. So, it's more than just the guidelines. It's how these types of overlays are different from the historic preservation zoning overlays.
You can make your case. Write, write a letter. Oh, okay, well, sure, we'll allow you to come forward. Were you gonna make another statement?
No, I thought I was having to defend.
Oh, defend, yes, you have, you have a, yeah, you got two minutes. She, she rebuttal, right? Well, no, you're not required, but you, okay, so.
Might not be a bad idea if anybody wants to review this.
Yeah, the applicant can come back for rebuttal, correct?
Correct. I just would warn you to be careful about talking about things that are not within your purview.
Oh, gotcha, right.
But the applicant can say whatever he would like in his two minutes.
You're welcome to say what you want.
So, this element on the site is still up in the air, if you will, as far as design. And more than likely, we will have continuing conversations with our client and owner of 1616 16th Avenue. Thank you.
That would be the friendly thing. We try to be friendly. Okay, did I open public hearing, Mr. Mosley? Okay, I'm gonna open public hearing, and I'm gonna close public hearing. And we're going to discuss or make a motion.
I would like to make a comment. Since this, the object, wall or fence or whatever it identified, it's outside of the purview. But as a process, and since there was public comment, as a planning commission, if indeed it is a wall, since that 20-foot is not appropriate, so since our planning code only allows six feet in the height of the wall or the fence. And the rear of the property, it's up to eight feet. So, this ob, object or fence wall is not appropriate. I just wanna respond to the public comment. And so, hopefully, building codes will review accordingly. And if we were to go to Board of Zoning Appeal, they will review accordingly. Just wanna make as a statement on record. But as far as the plan presented, if no other comment, I will make motion to approve 1616 16th Avenue South exclusion of condition one with all other conditions.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, hearing none? That motion passes. So, thank you, and again, thank you for both of you for hanging in here with us till the very end. We're not, we're not finished yet, but thank you. Happy holidays. Okay, Ms. Ziegler?
Yes, we have one last thing to discuss. Don't think it'll take long. That is the proposal of recognition. And I don't want to call it an award, because we, the department does have an award program, and that's not what we're suggesting. What we're suggesting is, one, recognition to be presented at your May meeting, because May is preservation month. Two, a neighborhood association or to an individual that has done a lot to preserve Nashville. And since you are the Historic Zoning Commission, that would likely be all these people that work so hard to get these overlays. And we see it maybe a little bit more than you do, because we're working with them on a regular basis. Commissioner Cotton was involved with getting Waverly Belmont. They, they do all the work, and I, we just thought that it'd be nice to recognize them.
I agree. I mean, it's, I mean, as you know, if you tell, it's an insane amount of work that private folks are taking on, and you often end up with, you know, some neighbors sending you cookies and some neighbors screaming at you. So, I mean, it's, it's a labor of love for people in these neighborhoods, for sure.
I also think that it's really appropriate when, you know, Metro Historic Commission has the preservation awards on May. And, and I've always been a proponent for collaboration for both our commissions, because we both support each other. And I think to have something like that where it's being presented by the zoning commission, you know, speaks, speaks for the work that community does, and that's why we're here, right? So, I, I'm, I really am for that and appreciate the recommendation. And do we have to vote on this?
I think you don't really need to vote, but has everyone had a chance to read it? Are you comfortable with the language? Did you want to make revisions? Do you want to wait and talk about it next month?
I just have a question, because such a great, you know, recognition, but do we have to choose the winner, or do we accept all the nomination? That would be my only question.
What's the process?
The way I have it laid out right now, and you can change this to any way you want, is that you would pick one.
And how would we have candidates? How does that happen? We just?
We would open it, and the way it's written right now, you can change it, is that it would be open to the public, but probably the majority of the recommendations would likely come from staff, because we're, we've been the ones working with people and, but it would be open, I think it would be best to have it open to anyone having the ability to recommend someone.
I've been on the, this committee for the MHC, where we choose the.
We have a commission, yeah, we have a.
There's a committee on the, on the MHC that works with staff to, to.
Selection.
nominate and select the awards, award winners for all the different categories. So, similar process. And it works fairly well, and we'll get a lot of nominees. I mean, the hard thing is picking one, but you do know that it's a yearly thing, and so, you know, there's not a genuine difference.
I guess my question is, we have what, over two dozen historic districts? Have any of them received recognition for creation before?
No.
So, I wonder if maybe, you know, for the first one, maybe it's, you know, going back and looking at some of those and highlighting more than one. But, you know, some of them that are, you know, and I think about Germantown and some of the, you know, people that were involved in that. And so, it goes back a long way. I'm just wondering if there might be a way to, you know, maybe we do pick one, but we recognize so many of them that over the years have been instrumental in creating the positive attitude we have for it.
Maybe grab it and kick it off.
Yeah, like maybe the initial one or the first one, you know.
I have a comment and a question, because I've participated in the Metro Historical Commission, and we got in a van and rode all around Nashville all day. But I guess my question would be, what would be the criteria for selecting a winner? Some that we're gonna.
This is how it's written right now, you can change it. Each May, the MHC honors a neighborhood association, merchants association, or individual that has, through their leadership, made outstanding contributions to their community and worked towards preservation and education regarding the history of their neighborhood or district. The winners of this recognition inspire others to take action in their communities. Characteristics of a leadership recognition honor include, provide, provided protection for the important historic resources of their neighborhood, provided education of the history of their neighborhood through events, publications, or neighborhood features, understands how to help move change forward that is respectful to the historic character of the neighborhood through effective communication and participation, has improved neighborhood participation and inclusion, created valuable links or improved communication and processes between the neighborhood and metro government. And then I specified that government employees, like the state mainly, and certainly metro, and volunteers and elected officials wouldn't qualify, so that there's really this emphasis on it being those who are doing the grassroots work.
You know, being on the MHC commission, you know, us three have had that, that experience to, you know, listen on, through years of the candidates and things. So, I'm just thinking, is there gonna be any crossover? The way I read this is that it really is specific to overlays. Not so much, right, Robin?
That's right, because it's, one of the things this talks about, the importance, you know, protecting historic resources of their neighborhood, and they're doing that via overlays.
Right.
And unlike the MHC, you won't have to drive around, because you're not looking at the architecture, you're just looking at what people have done. And so, I could see maybe you would have two neighborhoods, and they both got overlays, but one of them also did signage like Germantown did. You know, maybe they did one more thing that kind of puts them over the edge.
Yeah, or art commission. I know Germantown's got an art commission, and they're an arboretum, you know, so they've been working.
Timeliness is important, because one reason we've not selected, selected these folks in the past on the MHC is because, I mean, timeliness is important. I would say we did ours in 2015, 2016, Waverly Belmont, somewhere around there. And honestly, the majority of those people are gone now, just neighbors that worked on that. So, I mean, like, timeliness is important.
Yeah, like, ten winners.
Yeah, when you're doing this. So, I mean, and it's, 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 I mean, it'll be challenging, because again, that's one reason we never kind of honed in on a preservation award for neighborhood associations in the past, because they're very, those of you who have been on them, they are very fluid organizations. Mine doesn't even exist, that existed, you know, like it did six years ago, so.
And it's also an opportunity to invite the relative council member to the meeting, and it could just be a quick little thing at the beginning of the meeting where you, you offer them a certificate, we snap a photo, council member gets to recognize them as well.
And we would do that during our zoning commission meeting, not during, it would be done through preservation month, not necessarily when preservation awards, MHC preservation awards are given out.
It is not part of MHC awards.
To that end, this is not questioning or, I think it's a great idea, start with that. I think I would be, we'd be careful, because of our need to stay impartial, that we not recognize projects or applicants. That, and it reads to not do that, but I think extra effort would need to be made to make sure that it, it draws an amoeba around those things specifically. That would be my only concern. It's optics, not, not necessarily reality. But I think we have had criticism from individuals before that we play favorites. I like to think that everybody leaves unhappy, so I don't disagree with that perspective. But it is certainly something we gotta be aware of.
And just, just for everybody's edification, and I'm sure, Cyril, you know this, that the new Preservation Society of Nashville is gearing up, and one of its main focuses is on teaching neighborhood groups how to get a zoning overlay in your neighborhood. And I just have this vision that, you know, the people that are teaching the people how to do this, if they're successful, that would, I just think it's a wonderful, a wonderful endeavor.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Any comments, since this is our last meeting of 2022? And happy winter solstice today?
Cool glasses.
Yeah. Those were retro. Just, we do this at MHC, and I just wanted to do this and go around the table, and just if you have any comments as a commissioner, since, you know, we always like to have. Commissioner Cotton, would you like to start off?
No pressure. No, I just, I am, it is an honor and privilege to serve on this commission. It was an honor and privilege to serve on the MHC, but I am so thankful over the past three months for the staff and their patience with me and y'all's patience with me, as I learn. So, thank you guys for all the hard work you do. We don't, don't get enough praise, but we are very thankful for the work you do, so, thanks.
That's the first thing that came to my mind, was the thanks staff. And I don't think we have, get enough opportunity to do that. And so, we appreciate your, your efforts, even when we can be a little constant. I don't know what the word is, but, 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 thanks for putting up with us, and we couldn't do anything without you all, so, thank you.
We're, we're gonna, yeah, please share.
You know, I've been to several training sessions in different places around the state and, and talked to people in other states. And, and I was shocked to find that some of the historic zoning commissions, especially in smaller towns, don't have a staff to do staff recommendations. And I've seen some of those in action, and it is not a pretty sight at all. Because you've got people like us that don't know nearly what we ought to, you know, debating about something that's, that's pretty important to the applicants. And so, I, I have to say, you know, even though we don't always saddle up 100% with the staff recommendations, we always rely heavily on those and really appreciate the work you put into it, because being able to go through those helps us to deliberate and try to figure out, you know, is this a place where the commission can do something that, you know, the staff, you know, is not charged to be able to do? And so, I really appreciate all that you do, both in this room, you know, and, and the offices you're in, and outside in the community too, because I know you're all involved with different things, so appreciate that.
I'm gonna take this in a completely different direction.
You go. You can say whatever you want to say, Commissioner.
And thank the staff for all that they do. I'm not, and I got, I don't, I am gonna pile on, but I echo everything that's been said before me, and especially the fact that, I don't, I don't know how engaged. I know that every staff member is engaged with a project and they care about it, and some of the applicants are more fun to deal with than others, and that you may have a particular feeling, one way or the other, about how we decide. But I, and I, in saying that, what I appreciate the most is the professionalism with which you all do the work behind the scenes, which is a lot, and receiving it and herding the cats and bathing them and drying them and having them come up and, and, you know, do what they do. Some occasionally cooperative and oftentimes combative. So, that is acknowledged, it doesn't go unnoticed, and sometimes, even begrudgingly, we may not follow the, the recommendations, but hopefully we're at least, well, I know, even if it's not obvious, I'm always respectful of the work that went into creating them and the opinions that are, the opinions, and then sometimes they're, they're not opinions, it's straight fact, and, and we might figure out a way to screw it up on occasion too. So, thank you for your, your grace to allow us to do what we do, but most, but just thanks. And I'll, I'll close with that. Thank you all.
I have to echo, have to, you know, sing the same song, because you staff is the hardest working staff. Because we come here once a month, and we do have, you know, great information because of you, because you prepare and talk with probably sometimes pleasant applicant and sometimes maybe not so pleasant applicant. But you do guide them through and come up with great solutions. So, we recognize it, and I do recognize it, and really appreciate that. And also, like today, sometimes, like today, when we have to make hard decision, I really appreciate, you know, fellow commissioners, a different perspective, so we can rely on, you know, each individual's background and professional. So, I really appreciate that and really enjoy working with you all. And so, you know, I'm serving on the planning commission. So, I think overall, in Nashville, we do, are working really great, such as growth and preservation. So, our commi, commission is working really focused on preservation, and then planning commission are working on growth, but at the same time, understanding importance of preservation. So, I think, you know, overall, we are, we're doing great, quite a great city.
And thank you for being on both commissions, because we have, you know, perspective, and you do give us that, so.
And it's three meetings, I'm not.
Okay, first I want to thank staff for all of the hard work you do. Robin, I really appreciate the work you do, because when I get your email with the information for the meeting, it's set up in a clear and organized way. It's almost like a zoning commission for dummies manual, right? But I'm deeply appreciative of everything you do and your patience. And for my fellow commissioners, thank all of y'all for sharing your expertise with me every single month. Seems as though I leave here a smarter person when it comes to preservation, after sitting here and watching how you guys' minds work. Deeply appreciative of our brilliant architects. Deeply appreciative of our brilliant architects on the staff here for helping me to understand what I'm looking at sometimes. And for all of y'all in your respective places. Monet, you are like the most diplomatic person I know because in some of these meetings, I would have maybe wrung a hatchet from under the table.
Did I do that today?
But no, it takes, it takes a certain kind of skill to do that, and I'm not wired like that, so I appreciate what you do.
Thank you, it's very kind of you. You know, I've been talking to Robin, and I'm going to go around to you all too, but, you know, because we have meetings before the meeting, and it's just interesting that we have a really good board, and it just takes all of us to do that. And just to have that discernment and, you know, and just to have that unique perspective that you all bring, I mean, it's pretty amazing. I am just like, I'm a sponge, and I'm getting all of your wisdom and just how you bring yourselves to the table. And just, yeah, thank you. And one thing, the little, my husband says, you put that two finger out, didn't you? But, you know, just really appreciate, Robin, as you said, and I want to piggyback on that, that she gives us these, you know, reminds us that we've got our share point up. But also, just thank you for responding to her that we're going to be here for quorum because it really is important. Because if we're at the last minute and we don't have quorum, then, you know, she, I don't know what you do. Why, I don't know what you do. You just tell, whoa, we're having a meeting today. Have you ever done that? Has there ever been?
It's only case they get approved if we know they all get a meeting.
Right! See that? They all get approved. Well, I don't know that we want that to happen.
It's not, I don't remember, I've missed meetings, but I don't remember something ever.
Not in my time. But I'll tell you what, why else that's helpful, if I could just add to that, is that sometimes somebody will call and something's come up at the last minute, and they're like, I can't come, do you have quorum? And I don't always know. I know that I have, with that person, I know that I have five, and then there are others that haven't answered. And so that just kind of helps to be able to say, oh, yes, even if you're not here, we're still good.
Yeah, it's a commitment. Do you have anything to say, Robin?
I do, and the risk of piling on, I also want to thank staff and you, the team together, I think is the tightest it's ever been in my experience, and I think probably even before that. I appreciate that you don't always rubber stamp our recommendations, that you're making very difficult decisions in front of a bunch of people, and that you back up those decisions. And I'm, I'm just so grateful for staff because they make my job easy. That sounds trite, but that's really true.
Sean?
Can I just make a motion to have a group hug?
This is, this is truth or dare.
Well, I don't think they're recording anymore.
It's exactly right.
I think they are because we have a close study.
Oh.
Shit's right there.
Oh.
Sean doesn't do very well.
No, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I think public should know what we, we say.
Exactly, because Robin said we're, we're a group, we're very collaborative. We have this software that we can chat with each other and we pretty much... We're constantly sharing ideas and thoughts with each other because every recommendation you see, I mean, Melissa wasn't here today, but we presented her cases because it's seamless. We, we work as a group, so the recommendations are not from Sean, not from Jay, not from staff, because we're, we're, we're online.
That's great.
It's awesome.
Now, we'll debate a lot of those cases and dormer locations and things like that sort of in our staff meetings, but that's because we want to get through. When I come to you with the right recommendation, then we can sort of... You can go down there, that's fine.
Thank you.
I would like to start, but I think that Melissa Ballack is fine.
Thank goodness.
She's happy and on vacation. She has a funny story today, but she's...
This is her car, that's...
But yes, we all know that, because we, it's like they're supposed to keep up with each other in the office or not.
I don't know if I could plug any harder. We just, we, I appreciate my colleagues and very much appreciate the work you do. I mean, we, we take the design guidelines, feedback we...
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.